Good morning, everyone. Let me fix that first. I am not Chair Carol Hart, as you can tell. I'm your VP, Linda Escalante, and Acting Chair, calling this meeting to order. And, Ms. Miller, please. Well, I guess I should start by welcoming you all in the room on Zoom and online on this first day of the California Coastal Commission March 2024 meeting. Meeting in the lovely state capital of California, which was built on the ancestral lands of the Nisanan, Maideu, Miwok, and Potwin-Win Two peoples. And Ms. Miller, please take the role.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Here.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Nara. Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Cuncle.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga. Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Vice Chair Escalante.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And please, staff, remind everyone of our virtual meeting procedures. Hi, Chris, good morning.
Hi, good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Both paper versions, as well as the scannable QR code for paperless middle, are on the Commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 8:30 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. We will accept a request to speak up until the Chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have access to the Internet or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission staff at 562-477-9089. Again, that number is 562-477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. And when it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chris, and I'll turn it now to staff. Do we have any agenda changes or anything else that I might have missed?
Yes, and good morning, Vice Chair Escalante and Commissioners. I will now go over-
Just one second, Mr. Hudson, your volume is very low.
Hey, how is this?
It's still very low. Give us a moment. Keep trying to talk and then we'll adjust.
Okay, testing, one, two, three. Any louder?
Keep talking.
Testing, one, two, three. Testing. Any louder now?
It's a little louder, but we're still working on boosting it a little bit more. Go a little again.
Okay. Testing, one, two, three.
Okay, I think that's good.
All right, excellent. All right, good morning, Vice Chair Escalante and Commissioners. I will now go over the changes to the agenda. We only have two. Item 14A is moved to consent. That's the CDP Amendment Application by Snapshot Partners LLC. And Item 14B is moved to consent. That's also a CDP Amendment by Masrich SMP LP. That concludes our changes to today's agenda, so that brings us back to Item 4, General Public Comment. And with that, I'll turn the mic back over to you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Is there anything else?
Nope, we can go ahead and get started with general public comment and ask Chris to get us kicked off.
Amazing. Okay, so let's hear from the public via in-person and via Zoom, so, Chris, please help connect us.
All right, thank you. We have 30 speakers who wish to speak for general public comment today. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I'll call your names in the order that they appear on our sign-up lists. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach a speak. Several helpful tips. There is a raise-your-hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When is your time to speak? We will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing star six. So first up, we have Jana Ganyan, who is in the room, and then a number of people from Unite Here Local 19, Amir Dean, Jenny Amaya, and Catalina Hernandez. So, Jana Ganyan, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Jana Ganyan. I just wanted to take this opportunity today to introduce myself. I'm the very newly appointed Senior Advisor for Offshore Wind in the Office of Governor Gavin Newsom. And I wanted to just briefly introduce myself and the role to the Commission. And also, first though, I want to make a couple of comments. I want to thank the Commission for its strong regulatory outreach and engagement activities with tribal and community organizations that are at the forefront of offshore wind and onboarding this new industry. The consistency determinations in particular have been very effective in reflecting the input from tribal nations, marginalized communities, and others in the regions that are hosting offshore wind at the beginning. The technical assistance that Coastal Commission has provided in these communities has really made all the difference in understanding the array of permitting, the complexities of the processes. And I think it's created agency or a feeling of agency in those communities with respect to those permitting and processes. So really want to thank you. I think just lastly, I'll say that this role is is a new role to the system. It's coming on top of incredible work that's been done so far. And the goal, among many others, is to synthesize strategies across state entities to increase coordination and to build partnerships in offshore wind and, of course, within its climate equity and industry contexts. So thank you so much, and I'll look forward to working with you on these matters.
You're welcome to the Commission. Thank you, Jana.
Thank you. Next is Amir Dean, followed by Catalina Hernandez, and then Celica Valdez.
Good morning. My name is Amr Dean. I'm the President of Unite Here Local 49. We are the Hospitality Workers Union in the Sacramento region. Our members are hotel and food service workers and casino workers in the Sacramento region and throughout Northern California from Sonoma to Humboldt. Most of our members do not live near the coast, but we deserve, as much as any Californian does, to enjoy our state's beautiful coastline. Unfortunately for most of our members, a vacation on the coast is too expensive to even consider. It's only a few hours' drive, but coastal areas like Monterey Peninsula might as well be another planet for working people struggling to make ends meet. Our sister locals across the state have been advocating for years for more affordable accommodations on the coast, not just luxury resorts. We know the Commission shares this priority. In the next few months, you will be considering multiple hotel development projects. One such project, the American Tin Canary Resort in Pacific Grove, is offering virtually nothing in terms of lower-cost accommodations that could benefit working people like our members. Others, like the Magnolia Tank Farm Project in Orange County, have listened to the community and will provide significant community benefits, including lower-cost accommodations. For the sake of our members and working people throughout California, I urge you to uphold the mission of the Coastal Act, promote coastal access for all, recognize those projects which are furthering that mission, and don't greenlight developments that do not. Thank you very much. A couple of my members, by the way, are going to be speaking in Spanish, and there'll be a translator with them, so there'll be two people coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Catalina Hernandez, Celica Valdez, and then Lorena Gallegos. For members of the public speaking in Spanish that require translation, you get four minutes total to speak, including translation.
Buenos dias, señores comisionados. Mi nombre es Catalina Hernandez. He trabajado en el Hyatt Ransfield de Monterrey por durante dieciocho años, como recamarera. La última vez que fui de vacaciones fue al principio de este mes. Mi hijo y mi nuera me pagaron todo. El viaje, incluyendo el hotel, con mi propio salario, no permitiré, no permite pagar vacaciones. A decir verdad, apenas si gano lo suficiente para pagar mis necesidades básicas. Y ni siquiera puedo considerar unas vacaciones. En un hotel de categoría superior como el Propuesto American Tin en Canine Row, la vivienda es demasiada cara en la zona mayor de parte de mi sala. La vivienda es demasiado cara cerca de mi casa. Apenas, a veces, cuando tengo visitas familiares, me gustaría acomodarlos en mi casa. La oportunidad de alojarlos en lindo hotel cerca de mi casa, pido a los comisionados que apoyen alojamientos de menor costo en los hoteles de California, incluyendo el American Tin en Canine Row. Nosotros, las familias trabajadoras, merecemos la oportunidad de alojarnos en un hotel cerca de la costa de California. Cuando escuché pronto la propuesta del Propuesto American Tin-
One momentico. She needed next two minutes for translation? La traductora tiene dos minutos para traducir lo que acabo de decir.
Okay.
Entonces, por favor, permítale que ella-
Okay, gracias.
Gracias a usted. Entonces, para ser claros, son dos minutos para hablar en español y dos minutos para la traducción. Gracias.
Gracias. Good morning. My name is Catalina Hernandez. I have worked at the Hyatt Ransfield in Monterey for 18 years as a housekeeper. The last time I went on vacation was earlier this month. My son and daughter-in-law invited me, and they paid for the entire trip, including the hotel. On my own salary, I cannot afford to pay for a vacation. Truthfully, I barely make enough to pay for my basic needs. I cannot even consider a vacation at a higher-end hotel such as the proposed American Tin Canary. Housing is expensive in this area, and most of my pay goes towards my rent. At times, when I do have family visit, I struggle to accommodate them in my house. I would like to have the opportunity to accommodate them in a nice hotel close to my house. I ask the Commissioners to support lower-cost accommodations at hotels across California, including the American Tin Canary. We, the working families, deserve opportunity to stay in a hotel near the California coast. When you hear the American Tin Canary project proposal soon, keep the working families in your mind and ensure that we too can access the coast by rejecting the current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Celica Valdez, followed by Lorena Gallegos, Wilder Amaya, and then Jenny Amaya.
Then it was me next. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Celica Valdez. I am an organizer with Unite Here Local 19, which represent hotel and food service workers in Monterey Peninsula. The proposed American Tin Canary Hotel project, which will be heard by you in the coming months, is inconsistent with Pacific Grove LCP. Not only does the proposal for lower-cost accommodations fall short, but the project has not proven that its water usage will be sustainable given the vacant long water availability crisis in the peninsula. Additionally, there are other considerations such as the failure to meet the public amenity requirements needed for the project's proposed 90% lot coverage and issues with public access to the hotel public rooftop. The proposal leaves out the voices of working-class community, including the very workers who helped create great guest experiences in the hotel up and down California coast. When you do hear this project, I encourage you to listen very careful to those voices and to refuse to leave them out. Please reject the current proposal for the American Tin Canary project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lorena Gallegos.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Lorena Gallegos. Trabajo en Pebble Beach, en el condado de Monterrey. Soy recamarera. Estoy aquí hablando sobre el proyecto Tin Canary in Pacific Grove. He vivido aquí en el condado de Monterrey por casi más de 20 años. Hemos podido tener acceso a la costa de Monterrey en todo este tiempo en cuestión familiar. Uno de mis puntos a tratar son estos. Cada año en mi quile aumenta 200 dólares al año. Más aparte, el pago de la renta de mi hijo en la universidad. La verdad es mucho lo que se está pagando. Y la verdad, por los ingresos que tiene mi esposo y tengo yo, no calificamos para becas. Entonces, la verdad, a veces, no sabe. Esta vez pagué 800 dólares más de renta. Este año pagamos 800. El año pasado pagamos 1,500 más nuestra renta de la casa. La verdad es difícil solventar los gastos de nuestros hijos. Y tampoco esto me permite para tomar ni vacaciones, ni pensar en ir a restaurantes lujosos, ni a hoteles lujosos. Como puedo como puedo permitirme quedarme en un hotel si no tengo ni los descuentos? Y cuando nos dan esos descuentos, nos dan en fechas diciembre, enero, y febrero, cuando uno no trabaja. La verdad, este año, enero y febrero, no trabajé más que... En enero trabajé 80 horas. Con eso no puedo costearme ir a un lado para nada. En febrero, no trabajé más que seis días. Entonces, es difícil solventar ciertos gastos para uno. Otro punto a tratar es que cuando se tome este proyecto, escuchen. Cuando escuchen este proyecto, los últimos meses, les pido que consideren cuidadosamente las propuestas del proyecto en alojamiento a bajo costo. Pero que tomen en cuenta el bajo costo a nuestros ingresos. A veces te dicen, bajo costo tienes que ganar al año 40,000, 50,000. Obvio, yo no voy a, yo no gano eso ni con mi esposo. Ganamos más de eso. Entonces, nunca calificamos para bajos ingresos ni para nada. Gracias.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lorena Gallegos. I work at Pebble Beach, Monterey County. I am a housekeeper. I am here speaking to you about the Tin Canary project in Pacific Grove. I have lived in Monterey County for almost 20 years. All these years, we have been able to have access to the coast in Monterey County. Every year, my rent increases $200, in addition to the rent of my son in college that I also am paying. I cannot afford to take a good vacations, and neither I pay for a hotel as the one that I work at. How can I afford to stay in a hotel that refuses to offer discounts or low-cost accommodations? Sometimes, when they offer discounts in the hotel that I work, is the time that I have less work, so less money. When you consider also the low-cost accommodation, also having consideration the cost of living. Please, when this project is here by you later this year, I ask you to consider the project's proposal for lower-cost accommodation and its environmental impacts carefully, and reject the project as it is currently proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Wilder Amaya, followed by Jenny Amaya, and then we'll move to our Zoom speakers.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Wilder Amaya. I worked at the lodge, Pebble Beach, as a steward for three years. I have lived in Monterey County for 24 years. I'm here to express my concerns about the proposed Canary Team project in Pacific Grove, which I believe will not serve the needs of our communities, working families. While I understand the need for economic growth, I strongly believe that this project will only exacerbate the issue of lack of affordability in our area. Personally, the project will lead me to struggle on affordable housing and commuting to my job. Currently, I spend one hour commuting to my work. I know this time will increase when the project gets started. It will take me time and energy that would otherwise spend with my family. The hotel's high rates will make it inaccessible to working families who keep our community running, including workers in the service industry. This will only perpetuate the cycle of inequality and push our hard-working residents further away from the city center. I urge you to oppose the project as it is and prioritize affordability and inclusively. Please push forward creating a space that benefits everyone, not just a select few. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will take the needs of our communities' workers into account in your decision-making progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for mispronouncing your name, Wilder. Next is Jenny Amaya, and then our first Zoom speakers will be John K. Stahl, followed by Eileen Booken, and then Brenda Hour. Jenny Amaya.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Jenny Amaya. Tengo 23 años trabajando para el Sheraton Grand Hotel in Sacramento. He vivido 31 años en Sacramento. En todos estos años en California, he podido tomar vacaciones con mi familia. He oído que la Península de Monterrey es hermosa. Nunca he estado ahí. En estos días, ni siquiera sueño con tener unas vacaciones. Podría soñar, aunque trabajo en un hotel y le doy la bienvenida, a los visitantes a la capital de nuestro estado. No alcanza para una habitación de hotel en la costa de nuestro estado. Los promotores que están construyendo nuevos hoteles de lujo en la costa también deberían ofrecer habitaciones de menos costos que sean accesibles para los trabajadores. En esa parte de la misión de la ley de la costa de esta comisión, el proyecto American Tin Canary in Pacific Grove no hará esto. Por lo que me alegro de que dos de los comisionados hayan presentado una apelación. Espero que el resto de la comisión siga su ejemplo y no permita que el proyecto avance, a menos que proporcionen una cantidad significante de habitaciones de menos costo. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Amaya. I have worked at the Sheraton Hotel in Sacramento for many years, and I have lived in Sacramento for the same years. In all these years I have lived in California, I have never been able to take a vacation on the coast with my family. I have heard the Monterey Peninsula is beautiful. I have never been to the Monterey Peninsula, but I know it's beautiful. But these days, I could never dream of taking a vacation there. Even though I work in a hotel and welcome visitors to our state capital, I could not afford a hotel room in our state coast. Developers who are building new luxury resorts on the coast should also provide lower-cost hotel rooms that are affordable for working people. That is part of the mission of the Coast Act in this Commission. The American Tin Canary project in Pacific Grove will not do this. So I am glad that two of the Commissioners have filed an appeal. I hope the rest of the Commission will follow their lead and not allow the project to go forward unless it provides a significant amount of lower-cost accommodation rooms. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to our Zoom speakers, John K. Stahl, followed by Eileen Booken, and then Brenda Hour. John K. Stahl. John, you're still muted.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay, good morning. I'm John Stahl, live in Del Mar. It looks like Sandag and North County are up to their old tricks again. This time, it is a put-the-carpe-before-the-horse, take-the-federal-money-and-run, spender-to-loser trestle scheme. Before the alignments have even been selected for study, Sandag has already funded the trestle. They've breached public trust by coming to our city several times in the last few months for public outreach and declaring with a wink and a nod to their insiders that no decision has been made and all the options are on the table. I've listened several times to North County talk in glorious terms about the terrific benefits of this new eight-foot-higher trestle that is double-tracked. Not a single time, not once, have they ever uttered the words eminent domain. They will eminent domain up to 50 homes from this elevated trestle that will destroy the north end of Del Mar. Eminent domain is something you use when you have no reasonable alternatives. Members of our community have been planning and pushing Sandag to further utilize the already-existing Solana trench to get the trains underground before coming south of Villa de la Valle and creating a wonderful new six-acre park called Solana Park. This plan will allow them to achieve their travel-time priority and allow Del Mar to avoid the triple tsunami of eminent domain and Jimmy Durante portal and the hideous view-blocking trestle. When you lose your home to eminent domain, I think that your seating views are taken away, as well as for many other homeowners around the devastation area. A hideous eight-foot-higher trestle will without doubt do a lot of damage to both marine and terrestrial habitat. I get lost sometimes in the regulatory and bureaucratic minefield of life today in California, but something tells me that some shenanigans are going on. I can't seem to get a solid answer to the question of whether Sandag did an end-around the Coastal Commission to get some environmental exemption here or not. I know you guys are busy, but please look into this and determine whether or not Sandag has violated principles and requirements of the Coastal Commission, CEQA, and public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Eileen Booken. Eileen is joining via phone, so I have allowed you to unmute yourself. Eileen Booken.
Yes, Eileen Booken, Coalition for San Francisco Neighborhoods. The following are excerpts from the Coalition's public comments at the State Lands Commission meeting on February 26 and the Ocean Protection Council- at the State Lands Commission meeting on February 26th and the Ocean Protection Council meeting on February 29th. For the past 10 years, the Coalition for San Francisco Neighborhoods has been advocating for the waters off Ocean Beach to become part of a national marine sanctuary. This could come to fruition this year with the beginning of a management plan for the Greater Fairlawn's National Marine Sanctuary. The Coalition would urge the State Lands Commission, the Ocean Protection Council, and now the Coastal Commission to express their support for the waters off Ocean Beach to become a non-contiguous area. New subject: The sand mining leases in San Francisco Bay will be coming up for renewal this year. As climate is rapidly changing, the Coalition would urge that the sand mining leases be renewed for five years rather than 10 years. The Coalition would also urge the reduction of 35% rather than 15% for maximum allowable annual volume of sand harvested. A U.S. Geological Survey study has determined that sand mining in San Francisco Bay is increasing erosion and accretion on San Francisco's ocean beach. In view of climate change and sea level rise, this becomes critical not only for bayside San Francisco, but also for oceanside San Francisco as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brenda Hour, followed by James Bryan Senerino Gomez and Elvia Espinoza. Brenda Hour, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Brenda Hour, local real estate broker in the beautiful town of Grover Beach, California, the height of the Central Coast. I want to ask everyone to please review the letters from Pam Storten and from Vic and Debbie Early regarding our precious area and the permits that are being requested. Um, I'm calling today because of Central Coast Blue, which I'm going to call CCB, which has spent millions of dollars on a future project for Grover Beach that Grover has not been properly informed about. Central Coast Blue has spent thousands of my dollars to provide a project that is not going to benefit Grover Beach. It has moved to my town, tripled in price, without proper outreach of any kind or any alternative to the project or any recent new studies in the last two years since we've been out of the drought or adequate liquefaction environmental studies. GroverH2O.com, it's a, it's a group. GroverH2O was successful on Monday to be able to get back $96,000 of the Grover Beach residents' money that was overcharged because of this project. Again, Grover Beach currently has enough water in the lake to almost outlast this project. I want to introduce Anna Mello. She's sitting here with me, Anna Mello of Oceano. Please, Anna, go ahead.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Anna Mello. I am a businesswoman and I own the historical home that is just a few yards from this project. It was built in 1929, so it's 95 years ago, and I'm very, very concerned on archaeological dig and environmental studies and notifying the neighbors since I was not notified as well as all of my neighbors here. So please pump the brakes on this Central Coast Blue, and I hope that you will come and visit me.
When you're in June, please. Anna will educate you about our wonderful area of Oceano. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next group of speakers is from Unite Here 11, James Bryan, followed by Senerino Gomez, Elvia Espinoza, Vicky Juarez, and Don Don Chuah. James Bryan.
Apologies, I misfiled. I will be translating for Senerino Gomez, but I will not be speaking.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Senerino Gomez. Uh, just give it a second. I'm allowing you to unmute. Uh, Senerino.
Si, me escucha?
Ah, yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, buenos dias, presidente y comisionado. Mi nombre es Senerino Gomez. Trabajo en Sheraton Park de Anaheim por seis años. En julio, miembros de mi local vinieron al comisionado para apoyar el proyecto Magnolia Tank Farm en Huntington Beach. Estamos exigiendo que se apruebe este proyecto ya que beneficia a los trabajadores con viviendas accesibles. Nosotros como trabajadores no nos parece justo que, que vengamos de tan retirado a nuestros trabajos. Nosotros no podríamos pagar una vivienda en, en la costa por los altos costos de renta. Nosotros vivimos en Santa Ana y las rentas son muy altas. Nosotros como trabajadores de los hoteles no podríamos pagar una renta en la costa. Muchas gracias.
And then go ahead, James.
Okay. Good morning, President and Commissioners. My name is Senerino Gomez. I work at the Sheraton Park Hotel in Anaheim for six years. In July, members of my local came to the commission to support the Magnolia Tank Farm project in Huntington Beach. We are asking that you approve this project as it will benefit workers with affordable housing. As workers, we don't think it's just that we need to travel so far to our jobs, but we couldn't pay for the housing near the coast because of high rents. My family lives in Santa Ana, and even there, the rent is very high. As hotel workers, we would be unable to afford the rent near the coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elvia Espinoza. Uh, Elvia hasn't, hasn't been able to be promoted in as a panelist, so I'm allowing you to speak as an attendee. Uh, Elvia. Uh, Elvia, I have asked you to unmute whenever you're ready. Uh, go ahead, Elvia Espinoza.
Okay. Uh, good, good day, Honorable Chair and Coastal Commissioner. My name is Elvia Espinoza, and I am a banquet servant at Disney in Anaheim and Hilton in Costa Mesa, and have worked for 20 ye, years. For the hotel gurken like myself, it's not easy to find affordable housing where we are usually employed, like on the coast or near Disney. As a single mother putting my son through college, even affording rent in a city like Santa Ana is difficult for me. That is in addition to the expense of community to work. Many of the communities with hotels do not always consider the needs of workers, and it can even feel that they do not want us to be a part of their communities. Whatever the reason, now and now housing accessible to gurking families is being dealt there. That is why you should support the proposed project and the Magnolia Tank Farm in Huntington Beach. With a gold four thousand offered by the development, working people like myself will have the chance to benefit from living on the orange coast coast. Please approve the Magnolia Tank Farm when it reaches your commission in spring. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next is Vicky Juarez and Don Don Chuah. Uh, if you're in the meeting, please raise your hand. I'm actually unable to find you on the Zoom list right now. Uh, Vicky Juarez and Don Don Chuah. Not seeing them still, so we'll return to them at the end again. Uh, next will be Derek Falconer, followed by Will Hooper, and then Kimberly Ternan. Derek Falconer.
Good morning. My name's Derek Falconer, and I'm here to talk to you about the Barracks H Homeless Mega Shelter proposed by the city of San Diego across from Liberty Station, NTC Park, and Spanish Landing. Please play my video. We're flying over Spanish Landing Children's Playground and Beach. Across Harbor Drive are the H Barracks. The city is planning on tearing these buildings down and replacing them with the largest homeless tent encampment in California, with up to a thousand beds. Point Loma's H Barracks would be nearly three times the size of the next largest shelters in the state, located in Skid Row in Los Angeles and the Tenderloin in San Francisco. Mega shelters like these come with predictable consequences of increased crime, drugs, and regional blight. Hotels, surrounding businesses, and waterfront tourism would be seriously affected. The resulting economic downturn will cost many San Diegans their jobs. The Nimitz Pedestrian Bridge connects the east part of Liberty Station with pedestrian walkways, playgrounds, and athletic fields visited by those from all over San Diego. Liberty Station is the largest waterfront recreation area on San Diego Bay, welcoming nine million visitors per year to enjoy beaches, parks, paddleboarding, workout classes, and much more. These families and children will be on the front lines of the impact of this encampment. It's just a short walk from the fields to schools that educate over 3,000 students daily. While we support those struggling with housing, this is the wrong location for an unprecedentedly large shelter. We invite the Coastal Commission and all champions of secure, enjoyable coastal access to come together and dismiss the H Barracks encampment proposal. We also call upon the city of San Diego to find an appropriate site for this facility.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Will Hooper, followed by Kimberly Ternan, and then Q. J. Ann Marie.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Will Hooper, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring the light to significant negative impact that the Point Loma H Barracks encampment would have to San Diego and Point Loma coastal access areas. Specifically, I would like to highlight the impact to our young enlisted military families residing close by. I am a retired Marine officer, but I do not speak on behalf of the Department of Defense, the Navy, Marine Corps, or any government agency, rather, a concerned citizen with firsthand knowledge of the challenges that young military enlisted families face. Within about 800 meters to the west of this proposed mega shelter is a military housing complex called The Villages at NTC. 500 military units, uh, housing units comprise this enlisted housing area. It includes a child development center which hosts over 200 children each workday to support working military families. It is important to note that oftentimes, these are families with one spouse either deployed or underway from this fleet concentration area here in San Diego, leaving young, single-parent military households, uh, who are relatively unfamiliar and from out of town living here. A regular part of these families' recreation is Liberty Station Park, but the closest beach access for these families is the Spanish Landing Beach and Children's Playground, accessible by walking and biking trails from the military housing. This mega shelter is across the street, as you just saw, from this family coastal access recreation area, and it is more than likely that the introduction of up to 1,000 homeless folks will cause a major disruption to the safety and security of families accessing this recreational park. This shelter does not confine residents, and it will be the case that they walk across the street, flood the area of Spanish Landing, and cause disruptions to the safety and security of families accessing this coastal area. I respectfully ask the commission to dismiss any proposal for this encampment at the H Barracks site and preserve for our families safe and secure access to our coastal areas. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next, Kimberly Ternan, followed by Q. J. Ann Marie, and then Dan Sedgink. Kimberly Ternan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please, please play my daughter's video. Hundreds of kids use the green space at NTC Park every day. What will it look like if a homeless encampment is located right over the bridge? How will a nearby homeless encampment of 700 to 1,000 people affect those who use and live in Liberty Station? Hello, my name is Courtney Ternan. I'm 12 years old and in sixth grade at St. Charles Romeo Academy. My school is just across the street from Liberty Station. Here are some of the ways my family and I use NTC Park. We ride bikes to and from school along the water at NTC Park. My little sisters play at the NTC Park playground. My family calls it the sand park because we always come home sandy. We also play lots of sports here. I play volleyball, and my siblings play soccer. My little sister Lauren plays soccer with the surf league. And my school uses NTC Park to come on field trips and play at the park here. We participate in charity events also in this area. Every year, we do Ride to the Point, family bike ride to raise money for pancreatic cancer research. Our friend, Mrs. Cutter, has pancreatic cancer. This bike ride is a special memory each year. I see so many other people using NTC Park. The park is never empty. On our way to school in the morning, Navy people are usually out running for their PT. I see lots of families with little kids using the playground. I also see classes such as I-Tec High and Rock Academy using the grass sidewalk and basketball court. If the homeless shelter becomes a reality, I am concerned that Liberty Station and NTC Park won't be a safe place for kids and all the fun activities that happen here. I am also concerned that living right next to the airport in a tent isn't a safe place for homeless because it is loud and there's jet exhaust in the air. I hope the Coastal Commission will really look into the impact of this homeless shelter. Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next is Q. J. Ann Marie, followed by Dan Sedgink, and then Dr. David K. Uh, Q. J. Ann Marie.
Good morning, Coastal Commission. My name is Pastor Q. Yamawi. Uh, I am with clergy and laity, United for Economic Justice. We, uh, represent clergy from all over Southern California. I'm also here in support of the workers represented by Unite Here Local 11 and also with Groundswell. I would like to begin by saying, by reading a text from the scriptures that says, "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it, the world and all who live in it. For he founded it on the seas, established it on the waters. Who may ascend the mountains of the Lord? Who may stand in the holy place? The one who has clean hands and pure heart." That is why I'm in support of the Magnolia Tank Farm Development Affordable Housing Project in Huntington Beach. We know that California is the fourth-largest economy in the world with the highest income gap between the rich and the poor. We do not have a homeless problem, a homeless people problem. We have a homeless problem. The people aren't the problem. 20% of the project will go towards affordable housing. It is, it is, I mean, disheartening that people have to drive two hours away to come work in a place where people come to enjoy themselves. I'm hearing people on, on, all, all over Southern California, uh, working people who can't even afford to go on vacation on the coast, yet they're expected to work on the coast. And so, uh, I support the mag, please, uh, I hear that the Magnolia project, the, the application is about to be withdrawn. I'm asking that you reconsider that. As you reconsider that, you reconsider, reconsidering loving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Sedgink, followed by Dr. David K., and then Tony Alexander. Dan.
Thank you. I have a PowerPoint presentation. Excellent. Um, first of all, thank you for materials at Coastal, who shows all these 50, 70 presentations together every month. Um, Pacifica's coastal road, coastal erosion is a mining problem. It's kind of counterintuitive to the, uh, a lot of the scientific studies that get released, um, on global warming, ice melt, et cetera. Next slide, please. Um, Pacifica is often called the center of California coastal erosion here, and one of the reasons for this coastal erosion is that within 10 miles of the epicenter of the erosion, more than 14 mines have been historically located in the coastal zone on the coast. Next slide, please. In 1909, the, um, archaeologist N.C. Nelson walked the coast and mapped every shell mound. Next slide, please. If I place a satellite map directly over the Nelson map with no deletions, no alterations, et cetera, it fits exactly. The, the rising seas are a glacial problem, but coastal erosion is a recent problem in the 1900s. Next slide, please. In 1914, the EBLAL Stone Company in Pacifica, the Pacific Quarry, was sending 320 tons of gravel a day to San Francisco out of the, uh, Rockaway Beach shoreline. Next slide, please. Um, even the Seabowl Site is a former granite quarry just a half mile south. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the Pacifica Quarry. In the center-right, you can see the sand dredge from 1910 pulling gravel out of the quarry that's, uh, out of the shoreline there. Next slide, please. Pacifica coastal erosion is likely a mining problem related to the removal of coastal sediments by dredging. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next is Dr. David K., followed by Tony Alexander, and then Cedric Farmer. Uh, Dr. David K.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David K., and I live in Playa Vista.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is David K., and I live in Playa Vista next to the Biona Wetlands. Last month, Ms. Cindy Harden, representing LA Audubon, asked you to pressure the state to allow nonprofits like hers to conduct restoration in the Biona Ecological Reserve. Please don't do this. Cowfish and Wildlife Local Staff have their hands full enough. Revising the EIR for the comprehensive Biona Restoration in planning for over a decade but delayed by frivolous litigation. To accommodate yet another small group to essentially pull weeds in a two hundred acre weedy area that will eventually be completely cleared by heavy machinery is a waste of state resources. You can't just let volunteers into an ecological reserve to pull weeds willy-nilly. They need training, not only to identify what to pull, but they also need OSHA safety training, proper safety equipment and training on how to use it, and waste disposal arrangements. They need monitoring to ensure they are complying. They need a coastal development permit. The burden of the Fish and Wildlife Department to provide such oversight is not insignificant, and it takes them away from their critical work on the major restoration projects, planning, and permitting. LA Audubon is already permitted to conduct tours within the reserve. Friends of Biona Wetlands has held permitted monthly restorations there for decades, which are open to anyone, including LA Audubon. An additional arrangement is unnecessary, duplicative, and would disrupt the state's progress toward the larger restoration project. Please don't act on LA Audubon's poorly thought-out request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tony Alexander.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tony Alexander, and I'm here representing Groundswell and Water Housing, uh, for Water and Housing Justice. Um, California's overwhelmingly agreed that housing is a top crisis in our state. The Magnolia Tank Farm Project addresses this issue in Huntington Beach by adding two hundred and fifty new housing units with a twenty percent set aside for workforce and affordable housing. And the twenty percent goes well above the state's mandate of, uh, of affordable housing numbers required. Getting this on the agenda on the next couple of months is one of the utmost, uh, utmost urgency. So we just want to go ahead and, um, ask that the Coastal Commission, please do that. And again, thank you very much, and have a very good day.
Thank you. Next is Cedric Farmer, followed by Nick Breeze, uh, Breeze Bois, and then Adam Overton. Uh, Cedric Farmer, I have been, or I haven't been able to promote you in as a panelist, so I'm allowing you just because an attendee. Uh, please unmute when you can. I'm Cedric Farmer. I've asked you to unmute. Uh, Cedric, I see that you're unmuted. Uh, please begin. Uh, if you are speaking, we're unable to hear you. Still, I see that you're unmuted. Okay, I think we're gonna uh, come back to you in a second. We're gonna, uh, call you in a few names. Uh, we're gonna move to Nick Breeze Bois, and then Adam Overton, and then we'll try Cedric Farmer again. Uh, Nick. Give it a second as you're being promoted in as a panelist. And then please begin when you're ready.
Hey there. My name is Nick. I'm the co-director of Queer Surf. We be, we bring trans, non-binary, and queer people to ocean recreation, marine ecology, and coastal stewardship through a queer lens to support mental, physical, and social health. We're the proud recipients of the Whale Tail Grant, one hundred LA Surf Lesson Scholarships. Our lesson demographics include forty-eight percent non-binary, eighteen percent transgender, and fifty percent BIPOC. Also fifty percent low, very low income. Please go through the photo slideshow as I read some feedback, direct feedback from our participants. "I haven't felt that happy and carefree in a very long time. It was so wonderful being at the beach surrounded by queer, lovely, and supportive people for my first time surfing. I haven't stopped smiling and cannot wait to come back and surf with the group again. I never would have tried surfing without this group. It made me feel part of a trans and surf community that has left me feeling wonderful all week. It was a beautiful space to learn to surf, really touching, really helpful, very freeing. I wish Queer Surf had been there decades ago as a portal to wave riding. I would have found my peace so much sooner. Having queer and QT BIPOC instructors made me feel at ease and welcomed, and being able to connect in a new and exciting way with the ocean has started a hopefully lifelong practice for me. Also, this was the hardest workout I've ever done. I can't wait to keep trying. I hope to surf with queers again soon. It was incredible to be around other queer folks who were also trying something new. Finding community can be hard. It was a great space for easygoing beach socializing. It was also a great ocean workout that I'm looking forward to doing more of. Sharing the ocean with people in my community has brought me some of the most joy I've experienced in years. I did not do many sports or use my body much in my youth as a repressed and othered queer kid, so to be able to do that now in a space with warm community where we all feel seen and supported is so healing." Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next is Adam Overton, and then we'll try Cedric Farmer one more time, and then we'll move on to, uh, Pastor Terry Wilson, Marsha Hanscom, and Robert Roy Van De Hook. Uh, Adam Overton.
Hello, good morning. Um, uh, thank you for, for having me here. Uh, my name's Adam Overton. I'm with clergy and lady United for Economic Justice. We educate, organize, and mobilize the faith community to accompany workers and their families in the struggle for good jobs, dignity, and justice. The Magnolia Arm Project is a very important project for working people in Orange County, and hence a very important project for people of faith here who care for our workers. It will provide, um, uh, four things that working people most need: housing, green space, transportation, and good jobs. It provides affordable housing and, uh, and improves coastal access for the public, including a lodge with lower-cost accommodations, public parks, and trails. This represents a crossroads in the environmental movement. Traditional environmentalists are fighting to block the project because they say it will be impacted by sea level rise. However, we are in a desperate housing crisis and believe that the projects like these that build affordable housing next to jobs actually are the way to combat sea level rise and climate change. Only reduce the car commutes and allow working people access to the coast and public green space. We reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We need, uh, we need Huntington Beach to follow through. It, uh, it is a, is a community that is being sued by the state for refusing to build housing, and we may not get another opportunity like this for, for decades. So we please ask you to please support this project and to think about the workers who are going to benefit from this by living where they work on the coast, enjoying the, uh, the ocean. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Cedric Farmer, we're trying you again. Um, I'm, I'm asking you to unmute. And then please go ahead if you're ready. I see that you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, goo- good morning, everyone. My name is Cedric Farmer, and I am a senior lead organizer at Groundswell. Groundswell is a statewide, um, campaign to bring clean and safe drinks and water and, um, affordable housing to, uh, underserved communities. And I'd like to thank the, uh, the Commission for giving me a moment to speak this morning. Uh, and we're hoping, we at Groundswell are hoping that the California Coastal Commission will move forward with the Magnolia Tank Farm Project and, um, get on the agenda, uh, when, uh, when it comes up in the next, uh, few months as, um, Groundswell is working collaboratively with diverse communities and stakeholders, um, that wildly support, uh, it's wildly supported by labor unions, um, civil rights leaders, individuals, churches, uh, social justice advocates. And, uh, we all see the need for access, uh, to the coast and affordable housing, uh, for working families in Orange County. And again, the, uh, project, the Magnolia Tank Farm Project will be adding two hundred and fifty new units, and twenty percent of that will be set aside for, uh, the workforce. And this will be for, uh, those low-income or very low-income people, uh, those workers who, um, who, who service the hotels and other businesses in the neighborhood. Just makes sense for them not to have that long commute and also to be able to enjoy the beachfront. Again, thank you, Commission, for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you. Next is Terry Wilson, followed by Marsha Hanscom, and then Robert Roy Van De Hook. Uh, Terry Wilson, I'm allowing you to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good morning. Good morning. I am, uh, Dr. Terry Wilson, our pastor, Good News Missionary Baptist Church. I'm also president of an organization called Silver Lining of Hope Crusade. Uh, clergy, uh, laypersons in the church and the community come together to end the violence in our communities. Uh, I'm hopeful that the California Coastal Commission will see the Magnolia Tank Farm Project as a positive development. The Magnolia Take Farm far exceeds all state and local requirements and creates an expanded wetlands habitat buffer and maintenance funding for wetlands restoration for decades to come. Prioritizing, top prioritizing this for the Commission's agenda in the next couple of months should be at the top of the list. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Uh, next is Marsha Hanscom, and then Robert Roy Van De Hook, and then I'll call names that we haven't been able to find in our Zoom list. Uh, Marsha Hanscom.
Can you hear me all right?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Yes, okay, thank you. Honorable Commissioners and staff, my name's Marsha Hanscom. I'm representing Defend Biona Wetlands and the Coastal Lands Action Network. And I'm here to ask today for Coastal Commission staff and, uh, Commissioner help in supporting the LCP provisions that require protection of the Great Blue Heron Rookery in Marina Del Rey. Some twenty-five years ago, an effort began to protect a rookery nesting sites on the Los Angeles coast for the Great Blue Heron, which is our charismatic megafauna in, in the area. Um, the protection campaign for the herons started at Marina Del Rey's Villa Venetia apartment complex with a man who climbed up into a tree with nests in it that was going to be chopped down. We learned about this plan in the middle of the night, and so we mobilized to get dozens of phone calls into the office of the Resources Secretary, Mary Nichols. And thanks to Mary, three fish, three fishing game officials were dispatched to the site, two wardens and a biologist. The LA Times and numerous television stations showed up to document the showdown, as did members of the public. And so for years, we, we've gone back and forth protecting these heron rookery nests and not protecting them, back and forth with lobbyists on the developer's side and, uh, many members of the public caring about these herons. But now we have a, um, you know, we do have a provision in the LCP for protection, and we have an envi- a, um, development renovation happening. And right in the middle of nesting season, they, they decided to start this big noisy renovation. And so we really need your help. We have a county supervisor who cares about the environment now, Holly Mitchell, and she would like to help. Unfortunately, we have bureaucrats that are in the way, so if you could help us. Very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Robert Roy Van De Hook.
Hello, my name is Robert Fundehook. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, you're a bit loud. We just turned you down. Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I'm a environmental scientist and environmental educator, uh, college professor in the past, marine biology courses, geography, and, uh, academically trained and consider myself an ornithologist and avian ecologist as well. Uh, regarding the Great Blue Heron, the history of the Great Blue Heron in California and across the nation has, has been somewhat, uh, political. Uh, currently still on the East Coast, depredation permits are given for hundreds of herons to be killed each year when they're in the way of, uh, coastal ponds or fishing, uh, activities. Here in California, we had a decline of the Great Blue Heron that started in the late nineteenth century, uh, not too long after statehood, when persecution happened by farmers and ranchers and young men with guns shooting them at nest sites, until the Great Blue Heron was extinct on the Southern California coast. Not extinct globally, but extinct, um, extirpation vocally in Southern California and in the Bay Area as well with, um, only a handful of nesting sites in inland areas. After the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, uh, well after World War Two, the, we started noticing Great Blue Heron returning back to coastal sites. And now with, uh, properties like in Marina Del Rey where trees were planted, they grew to fifty to sixty feet of height, which is, uh, they need tall trees, the Great Blue Heron. And that has resulted at Long Beach, San Diego, various other places on the Southern California coast where the trees are old enough now that Great Blue Herons began nesting about thirty years ago. And now we're in a new war against Great Blue Herons, uh, left and right, uh. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have any more speakers that we're able to find in the lists, but we have three that we weren't able to find. If I call your name, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you may need to dial star nine to raise your hand. Uh, Lizzie Braver, uh, Vicky Juarez, and Don Donjuah. If you are either of those people, uh, please raise your hand. Lizzie Braver, Vicky Juarez, Don Donjuah. I'm seeing an unidentified phone number that is raising their hand. I'm allowing you to speak. Uh, please unmute yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, state your name, please.
Yes. Hello?
Hi, uh, we can hear you. Uh, please state your name.
Yeah, this is, yeah, good morning. Uh, my name is Vicky Juarez. It's good morning, Honorable Chair and Coastal Commissioner. My name is Vicky Juarez. I lived in California for twenty-two years. I have four jobs right now to support my rent. Like most workers, I had, I lost a lot of time and money to my commune, having a short, walkable commune. Shouldn't be looks particularly with the job demanding as a knight right now. If I, if I were to leave my job, I will be most likely need to, need to live in affordable housing. Like Magnolia Town Farms Development proposed affordable housing so workers like me can have the opportunity to especially in communities that are typical opposed to new affordable options like Huntington Beach. We need projects like this to be approved to set a better standard for development in Orange County or the state. Thank you, the opportunity to give me. Thank you, the opportunity to you give me. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. There are no more speakers. There are no more raised hands that I'm seeing, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, or.
Thank you. Um, thanks, everybody, for your comments, and I'll bring it back to the Commission or staff if there's any questions or comments about public comment on Zoom. I guess, um, all I have to reiterate is, uh, say no to the war on blue herons. Any comments on that? Dr. Huckbridge?
Not specifically. Um, we heard the comments, and I mean, I think we have a long history, this Commission, of working to protect habitat. I'm not, I don't know specifically the, you know, some of the specifics that were raised in public comment today, so we'll look into it, but, um, but there have been active, uh, permits that have had conditions in it. I know that this Commission has approved related to protection of, um, Great Blue Herons, so I, but I don't have anything other than that specifically.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, this is tangential to that, but something I wanted to bring up, and it's been an issue in uh around Humboldt Bay, and I think it may extend, you know, to other parts of the of the state, um especially uh in areas that are adjacent to our estuarine systems and those and and it has to do with, and we've talked about this before, light pollution and and sort of dark skies uh regulation. What has happened in the last year is a significant change in actually a technology of outdoor lighting. And so we've seen just a proliferation of LED floodlights. Uh, the difference between the current LED floodlight and what we had traditionally have understood as for external lighting is that they come without covers. And so they're non-directional. And so typically what you'd have in like halogen lighting and other lightings, they're in they're encasements. And so you you can direct them. But the new lighting that's become extremely popular, uh and I you're not going to unsee this now that you see this when you'll drive around, is that you just see these LED lights that just have no direction to them. And so they're just going in all, they're just going all over the place. They're also much, much brighter and they're much, much less expensive. And so they're just really proliferating. And they're proliferating on uh projects that have CDPs. I'm not even sure how our staff's gonna even keep up with it. I'm just, I'm saying this is really um something that we may want to, with our allies, address at the state level in terms of what what can and cannot be sold in the state, because right now they're it's um the, yeah, they're just being put all over the place on buildings. It's it's even hard to tell the difference between them and and headlights of cars. They're just being pointed in all directions and and it is something that's happened in the last year. And so I just wanted to bring this attention because I know our staff at the North Coast is seeing this. I was hoping just by saying something here today, we could uh collaborate with our other um uh offices to see if they're seeing this also, but um it's just a technological change that I think is overwhelming our intentions uh in regards to light pollution. I bring this up because with the herons, because uh a lot of those, a lot of these are shining into rookeries and other things like that um along our coast. And so I just wanted to bring reference and and light to that subject.
If I may through the chair, um, thank you for that. And I I know that in past CDPs, we have often included conditions requiring lighting plans. Um, but I hear your point that this is a new technology and we may need to pay special attention, especially when we have CDPs that are next to habitat areas, estuarine areas, as you mentioned. So um I will make sure to bring this up with our ecology team, so they're paying special attention. Again, when we do have conditions um that allow us to be more specific about what types of technology could be used or that there is shielding regardless of what type of light is used.
Yeah, and I I through the chair, if I may, I think what we're also seeing is projects that were permitted in the past, but you know, their current maintenance crew is replacing uh, you know, uh fixtures and those sorts of things. And so as they're doing that, they're not necessarily have the CDP in their hands when they do that. Um, and but we're also seeing it on the sides of barns on the side. I mean, this really, again, it's just like cheap, very bright lighting, so the proliferation is extreme. Uh, and I it really is in the last year. So you can thank me for not being to unsee that now.
Well, you know, my astigmatism actually is not keeping up with technology either, so I can totally notice the changes at night. Um, everybody okay? Did Mr. Hudson, did you come up? Did you have any com- oh, uh Commissioner Nodoff.
Yeah, we're there.
Okay. I just wanted to um Paul mentioned the American tin cannery and acknowledged that we've received a lot of communication from uh residents in Monterey County on this. We heard about it today. It's my understanding in talking with staff that we're going to see this uh issue come before us in the next couple of months. So.
That's correct. Uh, we're doing our very hardest to get it on next month's agenda, but we'll see if we can make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask um also maybe what the statuses of the Magnolia Tank Farm Project.
Similarly, we're trying to get that in front of you in the next few months. Um, probably not as soon as next month. More likely um the earliest would probably be June, I think, is the last discussions that we've had with the applicant.
Marcus, anybody else? Okay, um, moving on then, real quick before I think we want to take a bio break and and perhaps some logistical guidance about lunch, but um I I I just wanted to sort of give quickly the terrorist reports since this is my prerogative today. Um, and uh I missed last month's meeting because I had to go on a family emergency trip to Columbia. And um I, you know, one of the, there was a couple of civil rulings. One of it was that I got to avoid the good cry at on the dais to say goodbye to our AG Jamie Patterson. Um, so I I I'm sorry I missed that. I wanted to tell her that I respect her enormously and and will miss her, and she's absolutely irreplaceable. And I also got to spend enough time sort of thinking about how climate change is impacting the Western Hemisphere in general, Latin America, Latin America in particular, how you know, what it means to the fam- my family here, my family there. And luckily, when I got back, I was delighted to find out that this year's COP sixteen of biodiversity is going to be in Cali, Colombia. So I can't wait to be there. Um, the Columbia has two coasts. Um, and um I think it'll be a very interesting conversation to sort of bring all those things that we deal with here and things that are happening uh with our neighbors and down south. So um just wanted to give heads up and um any uh Ms. Miller, any advice about lunch today before we take a break for?
We don't have lunch uh to provide today. We're not usually allowed to bring food into hotels, so we're all going to be on our own. So we have a, we were just looking up, we have a couple of suggestions. If you're interested, um, I'm sure there's a lot in the area, but we um we will be on our own to grab lunch.
Yes, a lot of walking distance stuff Sam on Sacramento is wonderful. Uh, my favorite spot is Old Town Sacramento. So how about we get back at ten thirty and um in the meantime, bio break? Nice, so we're ready to start again. Do we have um a quorum? Yes, I think. Yes, and we have Commissioner Harmon online. Perfect. Well, before I started, well, ma- are you gonna talk about the new, our new commissioner for Caltrans or?
Um, yes, I was going to do that as part of my um executive director report. Yeah.
Awesome. So let's please take it away here.
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Um, my published executive director report can be found on the commission's website. Uh, but I'll spend a few minutes going over several of the items. Um, so first up, staff from the commission's Legislative Environmental Justice and Statewide Planning Units have put together a new page dedicated to affordable housing on the commission's website. Uh, you can find the link on my written report. There, uh, this is an extension of the housing briefing that was presented in December, and it includes useful information, links to other sources, and an interactive story map. Uh, the commission's NOAA Coastal Management Fellow, Liz Placencia, who is joining us remotely over Zoom, is going to take us on a brief tour of the new webpage. Take it away, Liz.
Thank you, Kate. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Good morning, Vice Chair Escalante and Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Liz Placencia, and I am a NOAA Coastal Management Fellow. I work with the Environmental Justice Unit, Statewide Planning Unit, and Environmental Justice, on environmental justice, housing projects, and sea level rise planning. Today, I will give a quick presentation about the new affordable housing webpage that we created following the housing briefing that was held last December. The new housing webpage was a collaborative effort between the Environmental Justice Legislative and Statewide Planning Units. We are so grateful for all the researchers, HCD staff, and local governments who presented information at the housing briefing, and we hope that this webpage is a helpful addition to that briefing and a standing resource for the public on the commission's website. The new webpage can be accessed from the commission's homepage by hovering over the learn header at the top of the page. The first subheading on the dropdown menu is the affordable housing header, which will take you directly to the to the new webpage. Next slide. The goal of this webpage is to provide the public and local governments with information on affordable housing in the coastal zone and examples of actions the commission has taken to encourage a range of housing opportunities. The webpage includes a slideshow of case studies with numerous examples of affordable housing projects that the commission has approved. We created an interactive story map that goes into greater detail about the commission's historical housing authority, current cost of housing in California, historical exclusionary housing policies, and how the Coastal Act relates to housing. Lastly, the new webpage has links to commission housing reports and resources, including a direct link to the existing landing page with memos for local governments addressing recent housing laws. We plan to add additional information and features to this webpage in the coming months as staff resources allow. Next slide, please. With the help of our Spanish program, we are able to translate and publish this webpage in Spanish. The Spanish version of the webpage can be found on the commission's Spanish resources site or linked directly next to the English version on the dropdown header. I encourage everyone to check out our new affordable housing webpage and share it with interested parties. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Liz. Uh, and I definitely encourage you all to uh go up to the website and check it out. Um, we're we're excited and are working on a uh companion webpage to deal with housing generally as well. So we're going to keep adding to this web uh webpage over time, so I'm looking forward to your feedback. Uh, next, the Coastal Commission staff from the North Central Coast Unit, Transportation Unit, and Ecology Unit participated in the development of a permitting roadmap by the North Central California Coastal Sediment Management Committee. Released on March seventh and supported by the NOAA National Centers for Coastal Ocean Science, uh, this roadmap aims to support nature-based and restoration projects for coastal resilience by providing a permitting guide and facilitating inter-agency coordination. Next, uh, our boating, clean, and green program staff have been very busy. I have several announcements. First, uh, staff and partners have set up thirteen dock walkers statewide virtual and in-person training and refresher classes for two thousand and twenty-four. These volunteer trainings begin on March second and run through June two thousand and twenty-four. Pre-registration is required, and you can visit the Dock Walker webpage on our website to view the training schedule, locations, and to sign up. Second, staff from our Boating Clean and Green Program and the California State Parks Boating Safety and Education Unit attended the Sacramento Boat Show on March uh seven through tenth to share information about the California Boater Card, boating safety, and clean boating. And third, we have released the latest Dockside Podcast featuring California sailing expert Jane Dunn, who shares her work uh making sure boating is a great and safe experience for people with disabilities. Uh, we learned about her motivation, experience, challenges, her role in expanding access to sailing and boating and options for people with disabilities who want to enjoy bo- boating. You can find a link to the web uh to that episode on my written report, and I highly recommend uh this podcast. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, um, there's a lot of really interesting episodes over the years. I've been sort of perusing them over the last several months and would just highly recommend them. They're they're relatively short and just interesting, so please do check it out. Uh, finally, a few Commissioner and staffing-related announcements. Uh, first, I would like to welcome Scott Williams to the commission. Uh, Scott is replacing Jeremy Ketchum as the principal uh commission's ex officio member representing the straight trans- state transportation agency. Uh, so welcome, Scott. Uh, second, stemming from our internal justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion work, uh, last month, a team of commission staff launched a voluntary mentorship program to support new and early career staff development, provide a place for experienced staff and retirees to share knowledge and career advice, and build a stronger sense of community between staff. Uh, the inaugural inaugural group consists of twenty-six mentors and thirty-five mentees, which is nearly a third of commission staff. Uh, the first cohort will run for six months and will hopefully be the start of an ongoing program. So I'm personally participating in the program and really excited about it, so we'll keep you updated on how it goes. Um, and last, I would like to announce that the commission has several openings for staff at all levels of the agency. Uh, one in particular I would like to highlight is an opening on our executive team for the Director of Environmental Justice, Tribal Relations and Communications. This position will oversee the implementation of the EJ policy with the EJ unit, the tribal consultation policy, and the tribal liaison team, um, and direct the commission's external affairs operation, managing the commission's Public Information Officer. The job posting will be open uh through Friday, March twenty-ninth. Uh, and please see our a website for any additional details. And finally, um, Madam Vice Chair, before I conclude my executive director's report, we would like to take a few moments uh to honor two coastal heroes that have passed on in the last few weeks. Um, so the first is Joe Bodavitz, who served as the first executive director of the California Coastal Commission. Um, so Billy, would you please bring up my presentation? Uh, we were saddened uh to hear of Joe's passing this week at the age of ninety-three. Uh, Joe grew up in Oklahoma, uh but began his professional career as a journalist working for the San Francisco Examiner. Uh, he moved to SPUR, the San Francisco Planning and Urban Research Group, where in nineteen sixty-four, he led a team that drafted the original San Francisco Bay Plan and then served as the first executive director for BCDC. In nineteen seventy-two, uh, when Governor Ronald Reagan appointed Mel Lane to chair the new, the newly created California Coastal Commission, um, Mel hired Joe to be its first executive director. He served as the commission's ED in its formative years until nineteen seventy-nine, when he went on to serve as the ED for the California Public Utilities Commission. So I did not have the pleasure of uh knowing Joe personally, but I did reach out to Susan Hanch, the commission's former long-serving chief deputy director, and she had the following words to share about Joe. Joe Bodavitz was the first executive director of the Coastal Commission, and he brought a sharp intellect, a writer's skill with words, a quiet and solid grace, dignity, and a grounded, inspiring commitment to public service and making the world a better place. Joe was genuinely ethical, humble, and a truly kind and gracious man full of integrity and truth with a warm and engaging smile and sense of humor. Joe was widely respected and trusted by staff, commissioners, and the public and was a leader who got big things done in collaboration with others. Joe made an enormous contribution to the state of California, and he will deep be deeply missed. So the second person that we would like to remember today is Julia Elkin. She was a former coastal conservancy staffer, a passionate coastal advocate and lovely person who many of us worked with closely over the years. So through the chair, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Nodoff for a few words.
Well, thank you. Um, I did have the pleasure of uh seeing Julia at work through my years as a board member at the Coastal Conservancy. And uh she was had lots of energy and passion for what she did. Um, fortunately, we are uh we can remember her through so many of the energetic videos that she made. One about talking about sea level rise at Stinson Beach I recently reviewed when she worked for Marin County. She had um recently left the Conservancy to work at the Sonoma Land Trust and um died in a jogging accident, but hit by a car in uh the East Bay. So it's a huge loss of such a uh such a young person with so much potential. Uh, I just thought I would um quote uh what Amy Huxley sent a nice note around to the staff at the Coastal Conservancy in which she quoted Maya Angelou. Uh, the quote is, "I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And I think that Julia was one of those people that really had infused a sense of enthusiasm for the work that we're engaged in to protect uh our our coast and to be in inclusive and accessible. So in that spirit, uh, in the end, she continued to share. Uh, she donated her organs and saved six people's lives. So um that's, uh, I just wanted to remember her, and thank you for making time for that.
Madam Vice Chair, uh, that concludes my executive director's report.
Thank you, and um my deepest condolences um to the loved ones and friends of our this departed ocean heroes, enormous tragedy. Um, just uh you know, does anybody have any questions or comments about the executive director, Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, it's just great to learn about how we're um continuing to educate the public on affordable housing and how we're. and how we're really trying to promote affordable housing in the coastal zone. I guess one question I have is whether there's any way to capture projects that are approved with, you know, like under local LCPs, where the projects don't necessarily make it to the commission, but they end up getting built. Because I know in Santa Cruz, we've been building a lot of, you know, development with affordable housing, and we have a 20% inclusion rate, which is also, I think, important to, you know, remind folks that we can make it work. And so I'm just wondering what opportunities there might be for us to highlight those projects as well, to just demonstrate that, you know, it's not impossible to build in the coastal zone, and we can make affordable housing work there, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. It's a great point. I think we are in the process right now of sifting through a lot of the data that we have. It's not organized right now in a way that makes it easy to do that, so we're trying to get it into a format that will. We do have information from local governments on notice final actions that, you know, some are appealable, some are not. But I think that that's a good question, what I think will be challenging for us, but I think it's maybe worth looking into if we can do it, is to do exactly, you know, kind of comb through all those. We don't have them in a database, per se, but comb through them and try to put together some of that information. So let me talk to the team about that and see what we can do. I couldn't agree with you more that getting some of the actual data around what this commission has done or the local governments have done, I think, is really important because there's a lot of rhetoric and discussion, and it's helpful to ground it in actual data. So I think we are really supportive of doing, you know, whatever we can to do that. So I'll add this to the list when we talk to the team about what we can do.
And I know it's on, I mean, I'm just putting out this suggestion. I know we're all busy with a lot of stuff, but since the effort is underway, it seems like it could be a good opportunity. And Commissioner Rice was just mentioning AI might be a good way to try to, you know, block all this data in a very quick manner. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think I got out of order. Was I, I think I was supposed to introduce any public or ask for any public comment to executive director report?
And there are no speakers for this item.
I need that. My spidey sense. Amazing. Oh. Yes, Commissioner Eckley, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to commend Director Hucklebridge and all of the staff that are launching this volunteer mentorship program. It's really exciting, and I'd like to learn more about it because it seems like an incredible example of how we could be doing this across all of the Natural Resource Agency departments. So thank you for that.
Anyone else before I, oh, Commissioner Nodoff?
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and congratulate you on getting the housing report and the update that really does encapsulate a pro-housing agenda for the Coastal Commission. You know, it's great to see this following up on our December hearing in Santa Cruz, where we learned a lot about, more in-depth about opportunities and challenges of building housing in the coastal zone. We also learned about the impacts of short-term rentals on long-term housing opportunities, and many more issues that we'll be able to delve in more thoroughly with this new website. So it's a very important contribution to the commission's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nodoff. Well, just wanted to echo congrats and gratitude for this affordable housing website and for it to be in Spanish as well. Excellent work, Ms. Placencia, with her presentation. Looked very much forward to, you know, getting all that information out there. But I think that now I'll be more conscientious during every meeting to maybe call out every item that is very much pro-housing. It might not be very obvious. I know we have a few in this month's agenda. So I think we should always just be reminded of the significance of even the little ones, the little items that are enabling housing to be built or to be preserved. And moving on, Dr. Hucklebridge, to any commission correspondents to report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So last week, Chair Hart and I authorized two letters related to legislative matters supporting Assembly Joint Resolution 12 and AB 2197. So Joint Resolution 12 by Assembly Member Alvarez is an Assembly Joint Resolution expressing support for President Biden's 310 million supplemental funding request for improvements to the U.S. International Boundary and Water Commission sewage treatment facilities in the Tijuana River Valley that have been impacting public health, the environment, and the local economy in San Diego County, and urging the president to declare a national emergency due to those ongoing impacts. AB 2197 by Assembly Member Addus would reauthorize the Coastal Commission's voluntary tax contribution checkoff to the Protect Our Coasts and Ocean Fund on the California State Income Tax forms. These contributions support the commission's Whale Tail Grant Program, and the law requires that all voluntary tax checkoffs get reauthorized every eight years. So because the commission's involvement with and support for both issues is well documented, we determined that both of these measures met the criteria for those rare circumstances where the chair and the ED can take a position on behalf of the commission in order to accommodate early committee hearings in Sacramento. So I'd also like to mention that aside from this letter on AJR 12, the staff does not have any additional updates to share with the commission on issues related to the Tijuana River pollution crisis. And that concludes item 6B.
Thank you, Dr. Hucklebridge. Any public comment?
No speakers for this item.
Thanks, Chris. Just bringing back to the commission, any questions or comment? None? Okay, just very excited that, you know, this letter got out there, and I'm glad that we continue to, you know, make noise about this terrible situation down in Piero Beach. And now we'll move on to Mr. Drake with our legislative report. Hello, Mr. Drake. Busy, busy times for you.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Vice Chair, and good morning, commissioners. This is the legislative report for March. The deadline for new bills to be introduced was February 16th. So this month's written report includes all of the new bills that have been introduced this year that are relevant to the Coastal Act or to the commission, and I'll walk through several notable new measures in a moment. At the end of staff's report, there's also a list of coast-related bills from last year that are still active and have the potential to move this year. But first, let me give a quick update on several of the commission's priority bills, beginning with SB 951 by Senator Weiner. The commission voted last month to oppose that bill unless it was amended to remove language that would shrink the coastal zone in San Francisco and would reduce the types of local coastal development permits that could be appealed to the commission. Staff are continuing to work closely with the city and county of San Francisco on an LCP amendment to address some of the issues underlying the bill, and we understand that that amendment was introduced at the local level yesterday. SB 951 was recently referred to the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee, where it's scheduled to be heard on April 9th. Another of the commission's priority bills, AB 2197 by Assembly Member Addus, has already been heard in its first policy committee. As Executive Director Hucklebridge mentioned in her report, AB 2197 would extend the Protect Our Coasts and Oceans Tax Checkoff Fund until 2032, and the commission has a support position. The bill was heard on Monday in the Assembly Revenue and Taxation Committee, and it passed unanimously with bipartisan support. It's now on the assembly floor. In last month's legislative report, staff mentioned a new bill by Assembly Member Laurie Davies, AB 1881, which would amend the Coastal Act to allow the governor's appointee to the commission, who is currently required to reside in and work with environmental justice communities, to alternatively have a professional background in geology, engineering, or the building and construction trades. This past Monday, that bill was amended into an entirely different measure. The bill no longer deals with the makeup of the commission and instead now would add coastal erosion to the list of topics about which the commission may convene a scientific expert panel. That bill is currently in the Assembly Natural Resources Committee. Moving on to new bills, in the past month, there have been four more bills introduced that would directly amend the Coastal Act. SB 1077 by Senator Catherine Blakespear out of San Diego would exempt ADUs and junior ADUs from the coastal permitting process. As with any bill that seeks to exempt a specific class of development from the Coastal Act, staff are concerned with both the coastal policy consequences and the negative precedent that result from the language currently in print. It's worth noting that ADUs are already subject to streamlined permitting under the state's ADU law, and in the coastal zone, many local governments have developed streamlined ADU permitting processes as part of their LCPs. Commission staff met with Senator Blakespear earlier this week to provide information about expedited permitting processes already in place in the coastal zone for ADUs and about the coastal resource, public access, and climate change considerations that can be relevant to how ADUs in the coastal zone are cited. Staff are working with the senator's office to explore approaches that would advance the author's goal of facilitating ADU construction in the coastal zone consistent with these policy considerations and without creating a damaging precedent. That bill will be heard in the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee on April 9th. Senator Blakespear has also publicly announced that she will be amending another one of her bills, SB 1092, to include language that would substantially change the commission's appeals process. It is our understanding that the amendments would create an entirely separate procedure for appealing a local CDP action for a multifamily housing project located in an urban area. Under that procedure, the commission would no longer consider whether an appeal raises a substantial issue of the project's conformity with the LCP, and instead, the commission would be required to consider whether the local government abused its discretion in reaching its decision based on new criteria that will be specified in the bill. The commission would also have significantly less time to review and act on appeals and would be constrained in the scope of project revisions that it could explore with applicants to resolve LCP inconsistencies. We expect to see the language of the amendments go into print tomorrow, and staff will provide additional detail in next month's legislative report. In the meantime, staff met with Senator Blakespear earlier this week to provide data that clarified just how small a percentage of locally-approved coastal development permits get appealed to the commission, particularly for multifamily housing projects, and to critically consider the confusion that would result from having two entirely different appeals procedures, standards, and timelines depending on the nature of the project. As with the previous bill regarding ADUs, staff will continue working with the senator's office to explore approaches to advance the author's goal of facilitating the efficient processing of permit appeals without introducing unnecessary complexity and cost that risk delaying commission operations. That bill is also set for hearing in the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee on April 9th. Another bill, SB 1234 by Senator Ben Allen, deals with LCP amendments. That bill would allow local governments to ministerially adopt modifications that are suggested by the commission as a condition of certifying a proposed LCP amendment. This would give local governments a new tool for expediting the implementation of LCP amendments once they're approved by the commission. That bill will also be heard in Senate Natural Resources on April 9th. A fourth new bill, AB 3192 by Assembly Member Moritz Succi out of Palos Verdes, would add a new chapter to the Coastal Act dedicated to major coastal resorts. Specifically, the bill would require the Coastal Commission to complete biennial audits of six specific coastal resorts in Southern California for compliance with their coastal development permits, as well as multiple other statutes, including SEQA and laws concerning recycling and pesticide application. The bill would also require any coastal development permit pertaining to a major coastal resort to require submittal of a turf, landscape, and pest management plan. And finally, the bill would impose a list of requirements on the six targeted resorts, including prohibiting non-organic pesticides, prohibiting various single-use plastic products, and requiring recycling bins, the violation of any of which would be punishable by a $500 a day penalty. Commission staff have met with Assembly Member Moritz Succi's office to discuss the significant fiscal impacts of requiring the commission to complete regular audits along with the other obligations imposed by the bill, particularly in light of the commission's limited enforcement resources. The bill has been referred to the Assembly Natural Resources Committee. Moving on, there are also several bills that, while not amending the Coastal Act, would affect implementation of the Act. The first, AB 2560 by Assembly Member Alvarez from the San Diego area, would repeal longstanding language in state density bonus law that requires multifamily housing projects to harmonize the development incentives provided by density bonus law with the requirements of the Coastal Act. This would have the effect of creating a Coastal Act exemption for the incorporation of density bonus law incentives into multifamily housing projects. If this sounds familiar, it's because it's a reintroduction of language from a bill carried by Assembly Member Alvarez last year, AB 1287, which the commission took and opposed unless amended position on. The author's office has conveyed that the language in this year's bill is intended as a starting place. Staff are currently in conversation with the author's office to try to identify a mutually acceptable alternative approach that would facilitate how multifamily housing projects harmonize density bonus law and the Coastal Act. We hope to have a substantive update for the commission in time for next month's legislative report. That bill has been referred to the Assembly Housing and Community Development Committee. Another bill that affects implementation of the Coastal Act, AB 2387 by Assembly Member Gail Pellerin out of Santa Cruz, would allow mobile home parks throughout the state to increase in size by 10% without needing to obtain any discretionary permit for the expansion. Commission staff have met with the author's office and understand that the author is already exploring amendments to prevent mobile home park expansions from damaging sensitive resources or building into areas vulnerable to climate change impacts. One final bill that staff would like to highlight this month is AB 2939 by Assembly Speaker Emeritus Anthony Rendon. That bill would require local governments to regulate the use of local public lands by nonprofit or tribal organizations who provide interpretive programming to groups of 30 or fewer participants in the same manner that local governments regulate general public use. The bill aims to promote greater access to local parks and beaches by treating small nonprofit and tribal programming as essentially just another public use, with no additional process or authorizations required. Staff see tremendous potential for this bill to promote increased public access to locally-managed beaches and coastal parks and anticipate bringing the bill to the commission next month with a recommended support position. That bill has been referred to the Assembly Water, Parks, and Wildlife Committee. Looking ahead to the next month, there are still several hundred new bills that are spot bills, meaning that they currently contain just placeholder language. The deadline for legislators to submit amendments to those bills was last Friday, and so those amendments are gradually coming into print over the course of this week. Over the coming days, staff will be reviewing amended spots for anything that would affect the Coastal Act or the Coastal Commission, and staff will add any such bills to next month's legislative report. The last week of March, the legislature will break for its spring recess, and then it'll reconvene on April 1st. Over the subsequent weeks, policy committees will be meeting frequently to hear bills. Staff's written report includes any currently scheduled hearing dates for the bills listed in the report, including, as I mentioned, several bills that will be heard in the Senate Natural Resources Committee on April 9th. Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the legislative report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Taking it to Chris. Any public comment?
There are no speakers for the legislative report.
All right, bringing it back to the commission for any questions or comments. Commissioner Rice?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Drake. Question specifically on AB 3192. Though all the bills that you cited are of interest to us, I'm just, I guess I'm pulling out this one. I'm interested in our strategy and also in terms of how staff is evaluating the urgency or need to really press hard on any of these bills and what our strategy is in terms of, once we've identified those. And in particular, I'm calling out 3192 because it seems to me that for those legislators who are interested in in housing and in facilitating more efficiency with regards to permits or issues that come before the commission, something like this bill really taxes staff and/or resources. Maybe we have to frankly identify different positions to fill without increased resources. So I'm just, I'm curious about this bill in particular because it has a ripple effect in terms of other priorities of the legislature.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Rice. I can respond briefly, and then if Executive Director Hucklebridge wants to weigh in further. On Assembly Bill 3192, we're fortunate that our agency has a very long and positive relationship with Assembly Member Moritz Succi's office. He's carried many important coastal bills in the past. And so upon seeing this bill introduced, we've enjoyed, I think, access and dialogue to that office to speak plainly about the commission. They already have a deep understanding about our agency and what constrains us. So for this bill in particular, we've focused on sharing a significant we've focused on sharing a significant amount of information about our enforcement program, about the great work that they already do, but plainly also about the resource constraints of that program and trying to explore alternative ways to advance the author's goal that aren't necessarily going to carry the same magnitude of fiscal impacts, because to your point, those impacts do ripple out beyond just the commission's enforcement program.
And thank you for that. And my question was not a comment on the mayor's or intended value of the author's putting this bill forward, so I want to make that clear, but thank you. And also, just to follow up on that, so in terms of some of the other bills that are called out that we have concerns about, I'm just curious if you want to highlight strategy beyond what you mentioned in your report and/or if our own ledge committee, if our folks here, I'm not sure who that is right now, are doing any double time in terms of pressing the commission's concerns, pushing them forward.
Appreciate that. The fact that a number of these housing-related bills have been scheduled for the April 9th Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee hearing certainly clarifies the timeline around which we need to be doing double time to engage, and we have been. Similar to one of, I think, the underlying principles and my comments on AB 3192 is that our strategy often begins with trying to understand the author's most fundamental intention behind carrying the bill and exploring ways to advance that intention with, one, kind of cognizant of potential fiscal impacts, but also policy and other precedential impacts that could be stemming from language that might be currently in print or that an office might be contemplating. And so I think that would be the common theme around our engagement with an eye toward trying to make progress in time for committee hearings that are already on the calendar.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Nora.
And I would just, Chair Hart and I are the current legislative committee, and Chair Hart has been communicating directly with authors of bills of concern, and I think she is doing double time on that. I did want to just flag that it's good to hear that staff is making progress with the city of San Francisco on appeals issues, and I would hope that if we can make progress on that from, on a staff-to-staff basis, that that could help demonstrate to Senator Blakespear, if she's concerned about the appeals process, that, you know, there are ways to address this without upending which, what's already a very circumscribed appeals process in the Coastal Act. So encourage those conversations to continue.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I don't have the bill number in front of me. Last year, there was a bill introduced in relation to camping. And sort of the glamping camping industry, and I was just wondering if we are going to be following that one as well, just because it could have impacts in the coastal zone, and wanted.
I can speak to that. I believe you're referring to Senate Bill 620 by Pro-Town McGuire. That bill, it's a two-year bill. My understanding is that it has not been moving so far this year. Staff can double check to see if the bill is still active, but at this point, the bill has been parked.
Thanks, this one. Keep it on the radar. Thanks.
Anyone else or staff have any more comments? All right, well, we know what we're going to be doing on April 9th, watching the Natural Resources hearing. Okay, so let's move on to, thank you, Mr. Drake. Appreciate you and Director Sarah Christie for your work, and of course, our legislative subcommittee. And we'll move on to 6D, concurrence with the executive director determination, and there will be a vote at the end of this. Dr. Huckerbridge, go ahead.
Thank you. That does bring us to item 6D, and Rachel Pausch, who is one of the commission's ecologists, will be presenting this item.
Thank you. Can I get my slides with the extra, underscore extra, please? Great, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dr. Rachel Pausch. I'm a staff ecologist with our Technical Services Unit. I'm going to be presenting item 6D today, as well as giving a little bit of background on the SONGS mitigation project. Item 6D is a concurrence with the executive director's determination to transition to a reduced monitoring program for Southern California Edison's Wheeler North mitigation reef. Construction of the reef was required as mitigation for impacts related to the 32 years of operation of the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station, or SONGS. Due to the successful performance of the mitigation reef over the past three years, and as allowed through Special Condition D of the original SONGS permit, staff is recommending that commission approve a transition to a reduced monitoring program. Next slide, please. As background, the SONGS mitigation program is one of the commission's longest-running projects. It began in 1974 when the California Coastal Zone Conservation Commission, the predecessor to the Coastal Commission, approved a permit for the construction and operation of Units 2 and 3 at SONGS. At the time the permit was issued, the magnitude of the impacts to the marine environment from operation of these nuclear power generators was not well-understood. And so the permit included a condition that created a marine review committee to conduct a comprehensive impact study. The committee collected data on kelp, invertebrates, fish, water quality, and physical ocean parameters before and then after Units 2 and 3 came online in 1983. The before and after data were compared to determine the actual marine impacts associated with the operation of SONGS. Next slide, please. Based on the studies conducted by the Marine Review Committee, the commission concluded that the SONGS cooling water system, which pumped approximately 2.4 billion gallons of ocean water per day, had two types of adverse impacts on the marine environment. First, the two intake pipes with locations pictured here on the slide entrained and killed immature stages of fish and other marine life, resulting in substantial loss of marine productivity in Southern California. Second, the discharge from Units 2 and 3 created turbidity or sediment plumes that also had substantial adverse impacts on giant kelp and associated fish and invertebrates. At that time, the commission therefore required that the adverse marine impacts caused by SONGS operations be compensated. This included the creation of 150 acres of tidal wetlands to provide out-of-kind mitigation for losses of immature fish entrained in the intakes. They also required a construction of 300-acre kelp reef to mitigate for losses of kelp, fish, and the invertebrates at the San Onofre Kelp Forest from the SONGS discharge. The commission also required a monitoring program independent of Southern California Edison to evaluate the success of these mitigation projects. These requirements were incorporated into the SONGS permit as conditions through an amendment in 1991, which officially started the beginning of the SONGS mitigation monitoring program. These conditions were modified in 1997, including a decrease in the required size of kelp reef from 300 to 150 acres. In 1999, the commission issued a CDP for an initial phase experimental kelp reef that would inform the design of a second-phase mitigation reef. The second-phase mitigation reef was constructed in 2008. The prior decades, oh, excuse me, the reef complex is collectively known as Wheeler North Reef. In 2019, the commission considered the prior decade's monitoring data, and with support from Southern California Edison and the Independent Science Team, determined that Wheeler North Reef was too small to meet certain performance standards. Thus, Southern California Edison applied for and received a CDP to expand the reef complex by 198 acres. Construction of that expansion was completed in 2020. Next slide, please. This map shows the location of the full Wheeler North Reef mitigation complex, including the 23-acre experimental reef, the 152-acre full build-out mitigation reef, and the 198-acre expansion reef. So those are all within that yellow rectangle there. Nearby natural kelp forests at the San Mateo and Barnside serve as reference sites and are also noted here as those green dots. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, the SONGS permit also included a requirement for independent monitoring of the performance of the mitigation reef. Scientists at UC Santa Barbara have been monitoring the reef since 2008 to determine if it is meeting performance standards. These performance standards included in the amended SONGS permit include absolute standards, which are measured against a fixed value and related to the measured impacts, such as the biomass of fish or acreage of kelp. There are also relative standards, which are measured against the two nearby natural reefs. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the number of relative standards met by Wheeler North Reef in 2023. This data will be presented in detail at the upcoming annual SONGS mitigation reef public workshop on April 8th in Dana Point. The monitoring results show that Wheeler North Reef met nine of the 11 relative standards in 2023, which was equal or greater than the performance of the reference reefs. Both the independent science team and commission staff have concluded that the ecological resources and functions provided by Wheeler North Reef were similar to those provided by nearby natural reefs, and this will meet the collective mitigation requirement for 2023. Next slide, please. With these recent results, the SONGS reef has to date earned a total of five years of mitigation credit. Three of these were earned following completion of the 198-acre expansion effort. While this is an excellent trend and significant improvement in the performance of the reef compared to before the expansion, the reef still needs another 28 years of monitored and documented success at meeting its performance standards for its required marine life mitigation to be fully satisfied. Next slide. Southern California Edison's CDP for SONGS requires this ongoing monitoring to gauge the success of the mitigation projects. However, the CDP conditions also establish a process whereby the level of monitoring effort for the reef could be scaled down or reduced after a project reached a certain success milestone. Specifically, Special Condition D, Section 3 of the CDP states, "The mitigation projects will be successful when all performance standards have been met each year for a three-year period." With the most recent monitoring results, commission staff and independent scientists have concluded that this milestone has been reached. Special Condition D of the CDP then goes on to state that if the commission determines that the performance standards have been met and the project is successful, the monitoring program will be scaled down as recommended by the executive director and approved by the commission. We're requesting today that the commission provide this determination of success and approval of the scaled-down monitoring recommended by the executive director. If the commission acts in this way, Special Condition D establishes that a public review of the future monitoring results be provided every five years or sooner if called by the executive director. Additionally, the program's work plan will reflect the lower level of monitoring required. Next slide. The protocols for reduced monitoring were designed by the independent consulting scientists and reviewed by commission staff. Based on the mitigation reef's successful performance thus far and the past 13 years of monitoring data, the plan calls for the number of relative standard sampling locations to be decreased from 82 to 15 at the mitigation and reference reefs. For absolute standards, such as kelp area or tons of fish, sampling would be reduced from 151 locations to 111 on the mitigation reef. Other standards would also be evaluated with fewer samples collected over a shorter time period. Analyses of the data collected between 2012 and 2021 showed estimates of similarity based on full monitoring were similar to those estimates based on reduced monitoring. Next slide. As an adaptive management measure, Special Condition D of the SONGS permit also states monitoring may be increased to previous levels as determined necessary by the executive director. Specifically, the executive director may make a determination on the success or failure to meet the performance standards or necessary remediation and related monitoring at any time, not just at the time of the annual public review. The independent scientists have designed a framework to guide this decision. Staff and our available speakers can provide more details, but in summary, if the SONGS reef failed to outperform either reference reef in seven or more of the 11 relative criteria, a return to full monitoring would be recommended. If the reef failed five or six criteria, continued failure the following year could also prompt a return to full monitoring. Next slide, please. Staff received one comment letter from the city of San Clemente questioning whether or not Wheeler North Reef has had impact on beach erosion within Southern Orange County. Prepared EIRs for the mitigation reef projects stated that past studies have shown low-relief kelp reefs do not have an impact on the long-period, low-frequency swell waves that affect beach sedimentation. However, staff are still communicating with the city to supply the requested documentation and working actively to address those concerns. In closing, staff recommends the commission determine that the performance standards for the SONGS reef have been met for three consecutive years. We additionally recommend that the commission approve the executive director's determination that a reduced monitoring program would be appropriate for the SONGS mitigation reef at this time. The motion and resolution can be found on Page 3 of the staff report. This concludes my remarks, but I'm available for questions, along with the principal investigators of the Wheeler North Reef Independent Monitoring Team, Dr. Dan Reed and Dr. Rachel Smith. They're from UC Santa Barbara but are here in person, and I believe we also have Southern California Edison available for questions via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Coastal Mission. Any public comments, Chris?
We have the representative from Southern California Edison on Zoom available for questions, and then we have one speaker, Mandy Sackett.
All right.
Mandy, we're bringing you in as panelist right now. When you're able to, please begin.
Hi, I'm Mandy Sackett with Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider has a long history of advocacy with SONGS, the decommissioning and the mitigation. The site is really close to one of Southern California's most iconic and cherished surf breaks, and so we do have several comments to make about the proposal. As you may recall, this reef failed to meet performance standards for over 10 years, and as of 2018, it had never met the standing fish stock requirement, despite the plant, you know, being in operation for many decades. We're grateful to see that the recent reef expansion has significantly increased the amount of times that the reef has met performance requirements. And we feel really strongly that the decades of insufficient performance would indicate that the continued need for monitoring at the original frequency, at least in regards to fish stock assessments. We, so we, we think that the original 82 sampling points reduced to 15, and then the 151 to 111 transects for absolute performance. At a minimum, we would want to make sure that a mix of these areas that have met performance standards in the past and those that have not met performance standards in the past be included in this new plan in order to avoid cherry-picking the best-performing sites. The staff report's also not clear on how they'll select two of the five original fish species to continue monitoring. We'd like to see all five remain included, but perhaps for fewer individuals. And then finally, you know, we ask UCSB and staff to consider a sensitivity analysis. That would be as to whether or not the reduced monitoring schedule would artificially skew in any way the ability of the reef to meet all performance standard requirements. So just to recap, we're asking for a mixture of monitoring all five species and a sensitivity analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sackett. We're good? Okay. Bringing it back to staff for any responses to that.
Thank you. So I do, I do want to highlight that the reef was expanded in 2019 into 2020, and so that's the expansion that she's referring to, so that the standing stock conditions have been met. And so we're looking at the three-year performance following the completion of that construction. As far as the sensitivity analysis for reduced sampling, the scientific advisory panel and staff did look at how the data would translate between full monitoring and what that would suggest with the results versus the reduced monitoring, and they did find that similar outcomes were achieved. I don't know.
I can just add really quick, and if the commission is interested in more detail, I think we could bring our colleagues from UC Santa Barbara up. There was a lot of time, effort, and science that went into determining what the appropriate reduction would look like to ensure that both there was a real reduction in effort and cost associated with the monitoring, but also that we would still have confidence in the results, and specifically, if there was a problem, we would be able to see it and therefore ramp monitoring back up as needed. And so, again, if anybody's interested in more detail on what that looked like, but I think it speaks to Ms. Sackett's point on the sensitivity analysis. That's sort of the process that we went through between staff and UC Santa Barbara to try to figure out how, how do we even think about reducing monitoring? Which transects? How do we do it? So, you know, a lot of time and effort went into that. And I would encourage, if you have questions, go ahead and ask, and we can get our science team up here.
Thank you, Dr. Huckerbridge. Okay, so now bringing it back to the dials. Do any commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Cumming?
Yeah, it's just great to see this work moving forward and these reefs working to kind of achieve restoration goals within these habitats. I'm just wondering, just because it was brought up during public comment, I'm just wondering if you could just speak briefly to the establishment, like the methodology behind how sites are selected for sampling and transects. I mean, you know, I know that there's ways that you can haphazardly design these and and, you know, randomize where these site locations are. And so maybe it would just be helpful for the members of the public to kind of better understand how the the methodology is is designed.
I think it'd be best to invite one of our principal investigators up to answer that question. It's a good one.
Please, Professor, come up to the and repeat your name and association for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dan Reed. I'm a research biologist in Marine Science Institute at the University of California, Santa Barbara. And I've been working on this project since 1993. The reference sites were chosen back in the mid 90s. We had certain criteria that the reference sites needed to meet to ensure that they would be comparable to the artificial reef. Those criteria included the propensity to sustain giant kelp, which is a major objective of the project. It had to they had to occur at similar depths and similar bottom topography. And they had to be close to where the impact was occurring, but outside the influence of the power plant. And so that really limited the reference sites to the two that were chosen, one at San Mateo, which is just about less than a half mile south of the artificial reef, and then another one about 10 kilometers farther south at Barn Kelp. As far as the transects, the transects are set out more of what we would call a stratified random design. They're set out so that they spatially cover the broad spatial scale of the reef. The transects initially were set up in pairs, the each the phase one and phase two portions of the artificial reef, there were 82 transects set up in I'm trying to think, what is that, 30? 38 pair? I can't do the math. The the number of pairs that were set up were similar. They were set up in pairs to facilitate the diving. So what has happened in the reduced monitoring, we've looked at the analyses and shown that the pairs are actually fairly close to each other. Those pairs are only about 25 meters apart, but they're 40 meter long transects. Those pairs, so what we've done is we've eliminated one of those pairs, and then we've reduced the number of transects, but still cover the full extent of the reef. So a lot of thought went into it. My colleague Rachel can speak to the sensitivity analyses that were done on it, but we've documented all this in a revised monitoring plan, which is available on our website. So I would encourage the commissioners or the general public to go to our website or contact us, and we can walk them through all the science that was done to make sure that there's a a lot of confidence that the reduced monitoring is going to be adequate to meet the permit conditions.
And and I will add that that plan is linked in the staff report.
Right. Well, thank you for all your years of work on this. And and I think it's just good for the public to understand, like, you know, sometimes when these monitoring projects are set up, you know, we try to people try to, you know, ensure that they're going to collect as much data as possible. But then over time, as you're looking at the sampling effort, you can reduce effort and still capture the same level of sensitivity. And so I think this is just an example of how we're trying to maximize our efforts in this in this monitoring project. So I just want to thank you all for your work on this and yeah, look forward to supporting the recommendations.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Reed. All right, great. Can anyone please somebody make a motion? Page five.
Happy to move the item. I move that the commission concur with the executive director's determination to transition to a reduced monitoring scheme for Southern California Edison San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station mitigation reef, and I recommend a yes vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cummings makes a motion. Wilson seconds. Any any comments to your motions? Okay. In that case, a roll call, Ms. Miller. Thank you. Commissioner Acuity. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga. Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Vice Chair Escalante.
Yes.
Yes, the vote is unanimous. Great, so we can move on from this concurrence, executive director's determination to our consent calendar.
Thank you, and that does bring us to item seven. Item seven is the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. There are two items on consent, and we're not aware of any opposition to these matters. And the applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendation, so our staff is recommending the commission vote and approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any public comment?
We have one person signed up to speak, but we're unable to find them. Scott Bader, if you are in the meeting, please raise your hand. We have one person raising their, oh, no, they just lowered it. I don't think we have them in, oh, are they? Let's allow this person to speak who's raising their hand and see if they're Scott Bader. Michael Adal Rimple. I see that you're unmuted. Please state your name. Are you Scott Bader?
Yes, I'm Scott Bader.
Ah, yes, okay, please go ahead.
All right. Am I being timed now?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Scott Bader at 607 Palisades Beach Road, next door to the applicant on the north side. The applicant's property has a long history of gaming this system and cheating the codes, including ongoing encroachments as well as fence and hedge height restriction violations. The applicant asked for 184 square foot of net addition to a three-story plus above-grade basement of 12,370 square feet. A single-family residence on a 9,800 square foot lot. I strongly oppose any addition to this monstrosity, which is already nearly two and a half times the size of my house, 40 feet high, and is looming over my home, blocking light and views, and already far exceeding allowable lot coverage ratio. The architect incorrectly states allowable lot coverage and cites codes that do not apply to single-family homes. There are no details on the plans of what is being added or removed. The property has been used as a drug rehab facility. It exceed that exceeded allowable overnight clients many times, causing terrible parking issues and general a general nuisance negatively impacting my peaceful enjoyment of my own home. I have other concerns with the applicant's proposed project that I cannot be that cannot be addressed in this amount of limited time here. I would like to thank the commission for this opportunity to bring these issues to light.
Thank you. There are no other speakers for this item.
Thank you. Bringing it back to staff, if you have any responses to that before we bring it to the commission?
Yes, just note that staff continues to recommend that the item be approved today. We do believe that this is a relatively minor project for a remodel and a small 100 184 square foot addition to this single-family residence. There are detailed plans showing all the work that's being done. Those are included in the exhibits that are online today, and they are available for viewing in the commission's South Coast District Office for interested members of the public as well. And with that, all closed comments.
Any, Mr. Hudson, and bring it to the commission. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Nada?
Well, just a question on it sounds like there's cumulative impact on this on this woman's structure. So while this is a relatively small addition, do you you think cumulatively it's still meets the tests that you're you'd apply?
Yes, we we don't have any other additions before us. So this is an exit, a large existing home, but it is located along a stretch of beach where all the homes are of similar size. So this stretch of Pacific Coast Highway is characterized by by homes of similar sizes. We think this will be consistent with the community character and will not be out of place.
Thank you. Any anyone else? Commissioner Rice?
I'll I'll just move the consent calendar under item seven.
Before we second, one quick question to staff. Is this is zoned residential or is commercial? Did I just hear that it was it was used as a rehab facility? Mr. Hudson?
This is owned for residential. Small rehabilitate, and I don't know the the previous use of the site, but small rehabilitation centers are in allowed use under state law within residential zones.
Great, thank you for that clarification. All right, anybody seconds? Cummings, so Commissioner Rice makes a motion. Cummings seconds. Any comments from you guys? All right, please read the motion. Oh, sorry, no motion. It's just consent calendar. All right, so the consent calendar, oh, a roll call. That's right. Yes, please. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Vice Chair Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Consent calendar. Passes, so as you can tell, my brain is coming, is fighting for lunch now. So we'll we'll get through item nine, the South Central Coast District. More consent, no. Deputy Director Report, and then perhaps take lunch after that. Like at noon, maybe one hour lunch from 12 to 1:00. Okay, perfect, so.
Thank you. We do have one item before we get to the deputy director's report. We still have item eight. So item seven was for items that were agendized as consent. And item eight is for items that will be moved to regular items that will be moved to consent. Then that is also for all the districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes earlier this morning, there are two items that staff is recommending be moved to consent, and those are 14A. That's the CDP amendment application by Snapshot Partners LLC. And item 14B, the CDP amendment application by Masserich SMP LP. In closing, staff is not aware of any opposition to these matters being moved to consent, and we're recommending that the commission vote and approve this item. I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any public speakers?
We have one available online that's available for questions, the applicant's representative. And then we have one person we're not able to find, Mark Raggo. Mark, if you are in the meeting, please raise your hand. If you are on a phone, you may need to dial star nine. Mark Raggo. I'm seeing no hands raised, Madam Vice Chair.
Do three or more commissioners object to any item on the deputy director's report?
You're actually on the consent calendar.
Oh, sorry.
And ask for expertise too, please.
Oh, yes, expertise. Oh, sorry. Any anybody has any expertise on the two items that went to consent calendar? All right. Can somebody make a motion and then a second?
I'll move consent calendar, everything removed from the regular calendar on now on item eight consent calendar.
Second.
All right, Rice makes a motion. Wilson seconds. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Harmon. Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Vice Chair Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous. All right, great. Now we move on to item nine.
Thank you. And that that does bring us to item nine, the deputy director's report for our South Central Coast District, which includes three immaterial permit extensions and one emergency permit. In regard to the emergency permit, I would note it was issued to Caltrans for placement of a total of approximately 480 linear feet of riprap in two segments along Pacific Coast Highway to repair the eroded slope between the highway and the ocean that had been damaged by wave action and was in imminent danger of undermining that roadway. And that was located along a strip of PCH in Ventura County. We're not aware of any opposition to any of the matters being reported today in the report, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. I am available for questions.
Any public comments?
There are no speakers for this item.
Great. Do three or more commissioners object to an item on deputy director's report? Any questions or comments for staff? Okay. Then I guess the commission concurs. We don't have to take a vote. Great. So so we're done with that. Well, I mean, should we barrel through 10A? How long would that would that item take, do you think?
Our staff recommend, staff presentation will probably be about five to six minutes. And I don't believe we have many speakers for this item.
We only have one speaker signed up.
Oh, okay, so let's do it. Let's let's get through it.
Okay. This next item will be presented by Barbara Carey, the district manager for our South Central Coast District. If we could cue the PowerPoint up for it, please, and Barbara, please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Item 10A is the city of Malibu's request to amend the land use plan and implementation plan portions of its certified local coastal program to revise the policies and standards for the placement of signs. This LCP amendment will apply to the entire city of Malibu, which is shown here on slide one. This LCP amendment was initiated by the city in response to a lawsuit called Cedar versus City of Malibu, in which the plaintiffs allege that Malibu Lip Section 3.15.3X is an unconstitutional regulation of sign content and that sub paragraphs 3, 5, and 9 of Malibu Lip Section 3.15.4C require broadly subjective determinations and are an unconstant unconstitutional prior restraint on speech. Staff notes that subsequent to the city's submittal of this proposed LCP amendment, the coastal commission was joined as a defendant to this lawsuit, and the city was dismissed from it, leaving the commission as the remaining defendant. Next slide, please. The solution proposed by the city through this amendment primarily involves the deletion of the four provisions cited in the lawsuit and to also modify LUP policies 2.80 and 2.81, which are the access and recreation policies specific to signs. In approving the LCP amendment, the city council found that the city does not oppose the right of residents to protect their private property or to exercise their freedom of speech, although no findings were made about how the LCP policies and provisions violate residents' rights or if there are feasible alternatives besides wholesale deletion of the requirements. This slide shows the proposed change to LUP policy 2.81, which would retain the requirement for signs to be approved through a CDP. The remaining sign requirements are proposed to be deleted. Staff believes that it is not necessary to completely delete the specific sign standards from the LCP in order to address constitutional issues regarding free speech. In fact, the proposed amendment would actually make it less clear how city decision-making bodies would interpret and apply the more general access and recreation policies and standards to sign proposals and standards to sign proposals, and their decisions would be more subjective. Instead, the sign requirements can be clarified and made more specific to guide the city in its consideration of signed CDPs to ensure that both public access rights and private property rights are protected. Staff has taken this approach in the four recommended suggested modifications. Next slide, please. This slide shows policy two point eight one with the changes recommended by staff in suggested modification one. The highlighted sentence is a more specific requirement that signs cannot restrict public access to lands where the public has a right of access. Example of such lands are public trust lands, public access easement areas, and deed restricted areas that grant public access. Next slide, please. Slide four shows is highlighting the second suggested sentence, which is also a clearer and more specific standard. Signs that identify a boundary between lands where the public has a right of access and private property where there are no access rates must be accurate and not misleading. Additionally, if such a boundary is ambulatory, for instance, if it is defined based on the location of the mean high tideline, the ambulatory nature of the boundary and the existence and nature of the public rights must be clearly conveyed. Next slide, please. Suggested modifications two through four make parallel language changes to the applicable Lip provisions noted on this slide. Suggested modification two adds criteria for the review of sign applications in combination with the amendment proposal to delete a similar sign prohibition. This is a subtle difference, but one that makes clear that there is a path forward to approval of signs that meet the LCP requirements. Finally, suggested modifications three and four modify two sections of the IP that were not amended in the LCP amendment, but where changes are needed in order to ensure internal consistency. With the suggested modifications, the LCP will ensure that public access will be maximized and protected consistent with the right of private private property owners as required by Sections three oh two one oh, three oh two one one, and three oh two one four of the Coastal Act, as well as the policies of the LUP. With regard to the consistency of content-based sign restrictions in the LCP with First Amendment rights to free speech, staff believes that the policy and provisions as suggested to be modified are necessary to strike the proper balance between allowing private private property owners to protect their rights and ensuring that the public can access lands where they have rights of access. There is a compelling state interest in protecting public access to sovereign lands in other areas to which the public has established legal rights as required by the state constitution and the Coastal Act. The amended LUP policy and Lip provisions with the suggested modifications are narrowly drawn to achieve the protection of public access. The purpose and impact of these provisions is not to prohibit signage or prevent speech, but only to ensure it is not misused in a manner that is false and results in a denial of public rights. Next slide, please. There is an addendum for this item that makes some minor changes to the staff summary of recommendation and adds the Malibu City Council's staff report and final resolution and ordinance as exhibits. In conclusion, staff recommends that the commission find that the LUP amendment only if modified as suggestion as suggested will meet the requirements of and be in conformity with the Chapter Three policies of the Coastal Act. Staff further recommends that the commission find that the Lip amendment, only if modified as suggested, conforms with and is adequate to carry out the applicable policies of the certified land use plan as amended. There are four motions to carry out the staff recommendation, which begin on page six of the staff report. That concludes our presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you so much, do any commissioners have any expertise to report? None assumed, none here, great, so I'll open the public meeting. Staff, would you please connect the public speakers?
I'm actually getting notification that the speaker who signed up is not speaking anymore. So we have no speakers on this item, no?
Gotcha. They heard my lunch message. Okay, so I guess we don't have to worry about that, so now we'll go to page six then, anybody has? Well, no, sorry. Bring it back. Any comments or questions from commissioners? None, okay. Then we'll bring it to a vote, therefore, motions start page six, somebody wants to make a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Wilson makes motion, who's seconds?
Oh wait, is there two motions for this?
Four motion.
Four.
Page six.
Yeah, okay, starting on page six. Here we go. I move that the commission certify land use plan amendment number LCP dash four dash MAL dash two one dash zero zero four nine dash one dash part B as submitted by the city of Malibu, I recommend no vote.
Wilson, not half seconds, Ms. Miller, please take a roll call.
Commissioner Nada.
Aye. Um, no, excuse me.
Nada, no. Commissioner Rice.
No.
Rice, no. Commissioner Uranga. Uranga, no. Commissioner Wilson.
No.
Wilson, no. Commissioner Akiri.
Upstain.
Akiri abstains. Commissioner O'Malley.
No.
O'Malley, no. Commissioner Cummings.
No.
Cummings, no. Commissioner Harmon.
No.
Harmon, no. Vice Chair Escalante?
No.
Escalante, no. Vote is unanimous.
Excellent, the mo- the motion passes, what is, am I supposed to read?
I just do motion number two now.
Number two.
All right. I move that-
Just to correct the record, the motion actually failed.
Failed.
Oh, that motion failed.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, motion number two.
Here's your chance to. We'll redeem ourselves with a yes. I move that the commission certify land use plan amendment number LCP dash four dash MAL dash two one dash zero zero four nine dash one dash part B for the city of Malibu. If it is modified as suggested in the staff report, I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
Wilson, yes, not have seconds, roll call, Ms. Miller? Vote.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Akiri.
Upstain.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye, just, we like to say yes.
Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes, the vote is unanimous.
Great, land use plan amendment passes, moving on to motion number three?
Although it's called motion one in here.
Yes, sorry, the local implementation plan amendment.
Yep. I move that the commission reject local implementation plan amendment number LCP dash four dash MAL dash twenty one dash zero zero four nine dash one dash part B as submitted by the city of Malibu, I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
Wilson asks for yes, not half seconds, Ms. Miller, please roll call vote.
Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Akiri.
Upstain.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes, the vote is unanimous.
Right, local implementation plan amendment. Approved, now the second motion to that.
I think that was the denial is approved, so. We're moving into motion number two, I move that the commission certify local implementation implementation plan amendment number LCP dash four dash MAL dash twenty one dash zero zero four nine dash one dash part B for the city of Malibu. If it is modified as suggested in this staff report, I recommend a yes vote.
Second. Wilson makes motion, not half seconds. Ms. Miller, roll call for the vote.
Commissioner Wilson.
Affirmative.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Akiri.
Upstain.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes, the vote is unanimous.
All right, the commission certifies that the local implementation plan amendment has passed, and I think we're done with this item. Yes. Eleven fifty nine. Don't tell me I don't land these planes well. So let's go to lunch now. Forty-five minutes to an hour, any? An hour, okay, sorry, it will be an hour, we'll be back here at one PM, thank you so much.
Excellent.
Oh, be quiet, be quiet. Sorry about that. Awesome, welcome back. So we now we're gonna retake our agenda, and I just grabbed my glasses. Now I now I have too much food brain, no, it's okay, I'm ready, I'm ready. Okay, so we'll be with item eleven A that are Ventura.
Yes, thank you. Eleven A is up next, and this item will be presented by Denise Gonzalez, a coastal program analyst in our South Central Coast District. We do have a PowerPoint for this, if we could pull that up, and Denise, take it away.
Thanks, Steve. I'll let that PowerPoint. There it goes. Good afternoon, commissioners, item eleven A is a substantial issue hearing for an appeal of a CDP approved by the city of Ventura to construct a new single-family residence with attached garage, retaining walls, and driveway. Next slide. As seen here, the project site is located on a vacant beachfront parcel at eleven fifty-three Bath Lane in the residentially developed neighborhood of Pierpont Beach. Existing residential development is situated on adjacent properties to the north, south, and east of the site. The established Pierpont Beach residential neighborhood was originally built on beach and dunes. This neighborhood is unique in that a growing field constructed in the mid nineteen sixties extends from the Ventura Pier to the Ventura Marina to protect and stabilize the recreational beach. Additionally, given that the beach site has never been developed and abuts the beach, there's a natural accumulation of sand on the site. The project involves eight hundred and forty-six cubic yards of grading and sand excavation to establish the building pad for the residence. The city approved the excavated sand to be hauled to an off-site location outside the coastal zone. Next slide. The contentions of the appeal in this case relate to the removal of sand from the project site to accommodate the construction of the proposed residence. Specifically, the appellant's request that this commission and the city reach an agreement on a sand management plan to retain sand that would be exported from the site. The appellant's desire the sand to be used for sand replenishment and or dune construction on Pierpont Beach. Next slide. The city's LCP does not contain any policies or provisions requiring the relocation of sand excavated from the project site to Pierpont Beach or other beaches within the city, nor does the LCP require the development of a sand management plan. Therefore, the appellant's claim regarding the project's failure to relocate the excavated sand or the lack of a sand management plan prior to the removal of sand are not valid grounds for appeal. As such, the appellant's contentions raise no substantial issue with regard to the approved project's consistency with the policies and provisions of the city's LCP. While staff agrees it's desirable and beneficial to reuse clean beach sand removed from the site for beach replenishment, relocating the sand within the coastal zone would require the approval of an additional CDP and an agreement between the applicant and the property owner, most likely state parks or city in this case. Next slide. In response to project concerns raised by members of the public during the city's local CDP process, the city included a condition of approval encouraging the applicant to coordinate with city staff to explore mechanisms to keep the excavated sand within the city's beach areas. Under this condition, the applicant can still seek out mechanisms to retain the site's sand within the beach areas of the city. And the approval of this project does not prohibit the reuse of this sand as long as the applicant obtains the necessary approvals for sand relocation. Commission staff is coordinating with city staff and the applicant on a potential disposal site for the excavated sand. Staff believes that either the beach seaward of the subject site or Surfers Point Beach, a popular public beach approximately two miles up coast of the project site and within the city, would be a suitable, would be suitable for the excavated sand. As some of you may remember, Surfers Point Beach has been the subject of past commission action. It is most famously known for its successful managed retreat strategy called the Surfers Point Managed Shoreline Retreat Project. The excavated sand would provide for ongoing beach renourishment in the beach area. As previously stated, this activity will require the issuance of a separate CDP. The applicant has submitted a CDP application to the commission to relocate the excavated sand, and commission staff is committed to working with the city and the applicant to expedite the review and approval of a CDP waiver for placement of the sand either at Surfers Point or the beach seaward of the subject site. Next slide. Lastly, the appeal states that removing sand from the project site is environmentally damaging. In this case, the city found that the site contains native and non-native plants. However, given that the site is adjacent to the beach and at the end of Bath Lane, a high-foot traffic area providing public beach access, the vegetation is disturbed and not continuous with adjacent esha or dune communities along Pierpont Beach. Further, given the small site of, the small size of the lot, construction of a smaller residence would not serve to reduce impacts to sensitive species or habitat. Nevertheless, given the site's proximity to esha, dunes, and sensitive species, the city conditioned the project to require construction outside of bird nesting seasons, to relocate and replant native vegetation, remove non-native vegetation, and lastly, require a biologist to be present during grading and excavation activities. As such, the approved project avoids impacts to the esha to the extent feasible and is consistent with the city's LCP policies requiring the protection of sensitive biologically sensitive communities. Furthermore, the project's prepared coastal hazards and wave run-up study concluded that wave run-up and flooding is not expected to affect the project site under most sea level rise scenarios over the expected life of the structure. Although the study found that sea level rise and wave uprush may potentially impact the site over the project's design life under the higher potential sea level rise with six point one feet or more of sea level rise. The residence has been designed with breakaway panels during high tide or storm events, and the foundation for the proposed structure is sufficiently raised above the expected elevation of potential floodwaters from wave action run-up, even with sea level rise. Although not raised as an appeal contention, the project has been designed to be consistent with the coastal hazard policies of the LCP. In closing, staff recommends the commission find no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal was filed regarding the- with respect to the grounds on which the appeal was filed regarding the project's consistency with the LCP. The motion for this can be found starting on page seven of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. And now commissioners, do we have any expertise to report?
Vice Chair, I have one. Sorry, I can't hear you. Might be a delay on my end. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Sorry, I'll figure it out after I report this expertise. On Friday, the eighth, at ten A M. For a little bit less than twenty minutes, I spoke via phone to Cheryl Heitman, who is one of the appellant's and she described briefly her desire that the sand not be removed and that we require the sand management plan to be fully and finally decided on before this moves forward. I asked her specifically what elements of the LCP this project violated and while she did not give me any specific answer to that, she did note that the appeal process was a little bit confusing and she didn't, it was not made totally clear that a violation of the LCP was something that they should have highlighted in their appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harmon. Anybody else? No, then I'll open.
How do I speak? This is Bob Myman. I have registered to speak.
Oh, we'll, we'll start, we'll start off a public comment just one second.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing and we'll have three minutes per side. This is the appellant, the applicant, local government and any, anyone who opposed the application at the local, at the local level. Chris, please.
I guess we have two people signed up listed as appellant's. We have Dennis Heitman and Robert Myman. So I will start with Dennis Heitman.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, could I defer to Bob Myman right now?
Yes.
If there's still time left. Thank you.
Okay, Robert Myman.
One, one second. Can we move the clock to three minutes, please?
And then when you're ready, Robert, Bob, Myman. Are you in, you may begin.
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Should I push the start button? Is that how that works?
Go ahead and start your testimony.
Okay, well, I, I think we're basically on the same side. We were as homeowners and people that live on Bath Lane, looking to have the least intrusive alternative. The, if the commission is saying that Mr. Guthrie is going to get a permit to either leave the sand on the beach at, on Pierpont at the end of Bath Lane where there's a huge divot that could be filled, that was caused when the storm last month and I'm sure you all saw the international pictures of waves that actually crashed across his property. If that would be our first choice because it protects all our houses on Bath Lane with a natural amount of sand. Our second choice is, sure, take it down to Surfers Point. The only thing we strongly object to is the idea that eighty-five truckloads of sand should go up and down our little narrow alley-like street at forty-five mile ride to Simi Valley. None of that sounded like a good idea, but it sounds like, if I understand correctly from, from Ms. Gonzalez's evaluation, that the support is to try to give the Guthries a more environmentally easiest, cheapest, best solution, which is leave the sand on some part of the beach. And the only thing I disagree with is that we've had big waves the last two winters and I don't think it's reasonable to think they're not going to continue that way. And when, when those waves come up and break, they, they come down the block. So we're anxious to have as much sand protecting us as possible and that evidenced somewhat by the fact that the county fire department sent trucks out that night after those waves started, built a berm, seven-foot-high berm that they took down this last week that I'm sure you're probably all aware of. So I, I thank you for your time. I did it in two minutes and four seconds. And thank you. I hope you rule the right way. Appreciate your time.
Sir, and could you just repeat your name for the record?
My name is Robert Myman, M Y M A N.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the, is there?
Unless Dennis Heitman wanted to speak now.
Yes, can I make one comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The idea of trucking the sand to anywhere else does involve, as Bob said, the trucking up and down the street. So it'd be much more logical as we, but we're pretty much near where it is. The city has a great deal of sand already in storage that could be put on Surfers Point as soon as an agreement, a sand management plan is developed. For this emergency situation right now, the most logical position is to just take the sand, locate it near where the lot is and it would save everybody a lot of money and time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis, would you just repeat your name and your relationship? Are you an appellant?
Yeah, yes, Dennis Heitman. I am one of the appellant's.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to the applicant.
Yes, we have one member lap, or one applicant in on Zoom, Brian Guthrie. Brian, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Guthrie. My wife and I are the owners of the lot identified as eleven fifty-three Bath Lane. On Monday, for the first time in the thirty month, thirty-nine months, our project has been pending approval. We were offered the opportunity to revise the approved grading plan so as to allow for environmentally preferred option of relocating sand from our lot to an area along the beach where erosion has been especially problematic. Since a similar option was requested and denied well over two years ago, we welcome any change which subsequently eliminates transportation of sand to a distant landfill as is currently approved. Yesterday, I filed application for coastal development permit based on Ventura Commission staff's relocation recommendation and look forward to this environmentally sound alternative moving swiftly through the approval process. However, I would like to note that for the last several months, architectural drawings have been ready for submission but put on hold pending the outcome of today's appeal. So as to ensure our thirty-nine-month-plus project is not subjected to unreasonable delays as a result of this recent application, we request that if the C D P is not finalized within the following three-month period, our grading plan as currently approved will remain as a secondary option. In order to facilitate this condition, commission members simply need to support staff's five-point determination, which states that today's appeal is quote "without substantial issue" and therefore should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Please sit on, sit on the line in case anybody has any questions.
And then we have no public commenters, but we have one person from the city of Ventura available for questions.
Great, so I guess we'll close public comment then now and any response from staff before we bring it to the dice?
Yes, thank you. Just like to make a couple of quick observations. One, this, this case was interesting because although we are recommending the commission find no substantial issue, that's based on the lack of policies within the city's LCP, which is the standard review for an appeal that would require what it is that the, the appellant's are asking for, which is to place the sand that is a byproduct of construction for a single-family residence on this site on the beach. However, we couldn't agree more that that is a worthy goal and should be incorporated into these projects. And that was reflected in the city's conditions of approval. Although it wasn't part of the original recommendation to the city council, the city council did require a condition that the applicant work with our staff, the city staff to find a way to put this sand on the beach if at all feasible. And we're committed to doing that and we have in the past a couple of weeks reached out to the city and the applicant to do just that. The city has indicated their support. They identified the locations that Denise had mentioned as possible sites to take the sand. That still requires some trucking, but it keeps that sand local and on local beaches. And importantly, Mr. Guthrie submitted his permit application, as, as Ms. Gonzalez also mentioned this week, to do just that to our staff. So because that sand placement would occur within our jurisdiction, that would be an application to, to us. And we believe that could likely even qualify as a coastal development permit waiver. So we look forward to working with the applicant to make this happen. With that, I'll just note, or I'll ask unless Ms. Gonzalez has any additional responses, I'm going to go ahead and close the staff comment.
Actually, if possible, I'd like to add one quick thing. I just, I want to thank our South Central staff, Steve and Denise and Barbara for kind of, you know, as, as we've noted, this is not an LCP policy here, but I think we all agreed it was the, the right thing to do. And so they, you know, they, they worked to try to figure out a solution to this problem and really went above and beyond. So I just want to thank them. And I will, we're available for questions.
Well.
Thank you. Oh. I think we're, we're close with the public hearing, sir, so we may come back to you for questions one, one minute. So bringing it back to the dice, do we, Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. I just had one quick question about the, it sounded like the applicant had asked about like timeline in terms of how quickly this could get turned around and there was something in there along the lines of it wasn't able to get accomplished in the, in three months that they'd want to continue moving forward. And so I was just wondering if there's what the timeline looks like on this because it sounds like it's a win-win and just, yeah, as long as it doesn't take too long.
I'll start and then I'll pass it off to Steve, but my understanding is, as, as Steve mentioned, you know, we think this could be a waiver that can be done very quickly. We, we, we want it done quickly as well. Steve, do you have any other specific thoughts or comments?
No, in terms of the application for the sand placement, that's a perfect answer. I would just note that I believe the applicant was also talking about the local process and timing and of course, that's outside our control and would, would be the responsibility of the city and the issuance of their coastal development permit.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just hope we can get this moving along pretty quickly. So that's my comments.
Any, any other comments or questions? Okay, before I move to the motion, then yes, indeed, trucking really beautiful sand to a landfill in Simi Valley is terrible, terrible thing. So I'm glad that we have a resolution to this. So just the city, the city representatives, I just want to sort of hear from them kind of what their commitment is for this management plan and also, you know, what, it's, it's going to be a process between now and then. So what if this process goes along, what's going to happen to that sand in the meantime? You know, we, we don't, I, I think we're waiting. There's going to be kind of an honor system thing. We're going to wait for a management plan and we're, we're going to work with them. But I think I want to hear some confirmation from the city.
Yes, we have Jamie on the line from the city of Ventura. Jamie Peltier.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Yeah, so the commitment to moving the sand is very much going to be contingent on the approval of the coastal development permit for, with the coastal commission. So we will end up having to process the grading permits and building permits at the same time. So I think the timing of it will line up. And ultimately, it, it's, as Mr. Guthrie had mentioned, it's been a, quite a long journey to get to this point. And we definitely want to make this happen and hope that the sand can remain where it is. And in the meantime, it, it's a vacant lot and the sand will remain on the site. There has been a lot of storms that come, that have come through, but ultimately, the, the site is just vacant and will remain as is until the grading permits and building permits are issued.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, does anybody have any closing comments or anything or motion?
I'll make the motion, if that's all right.
Yes, please. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the commission determine that appeal number A dash four dash S B V dash two four dash zero zero three raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under section three zero six zero three of the Coastal Act. And I recommend a yes vote.
I'll second.
Commissioner Wilson moves. Cummings second. Any comments or we'll just go to a roll call vote. Ms. Miller, please.
Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon? Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Vice Chair Escalante? Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous.
The commission finds that this appeal does not present a substantial issue and the process has worked. So thank you all very, very much. Moving on to our next item.
And that's item twelve A. Barbara Carey will be presenting again. If we could pull up the PowerPoint presentation, please.
Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Escalante and commissioners. Item twelve A is an amendment to a coastal development permit approved in nineteen seventy-six pursuant to the requirements of the Coastal Zone Conservation Act of nineteen seventy-two or otherwise known as Prop twenty, which was the predecessor to the Coastal Act. The C D P approved the construction of a two-story, single-family residence on a beachfront lot seaward of Latigo Shore, Latigo Shore Drive in the city of Malibu. The C D P was approved subject to two special conditions, one of which required the recordation of a deed restriction granting lateral public access from the mean high tideline landward for twenty-five feet. The application does not propose any changes to special conditions one or two and they remain in effect. Next slide, please. Slide two shows the location of the project site. This project is related to the same lawsuit that prompted the LCP amendment you reviewed earlier today. The applicants for this permit amendment, the Cedars, initially asked Malibu city staff whether the city would approve a C D P for their sign. And city staff explained that as they interpreted the LCP provisions, no sign could be permitted. In response, the Cedars filed their lawsuit against the city primarily as a challenge to the constitutionality of those LCP provisions. However, along the way, the courts determined that the commission, not the city, has permit authority over the plaintiff's proposed sign. So the executive director and the individual commissioners were joined as defendants to the case. Commission planning staff interpreted the LCP provisions differently from city staff and sent a letter to the Cedars providing staff's opinion that there were signs the Cedars could propose that staff could recommend that the commission approve. The Cedars eventually agreed to go through the normal permit process and if the result is acceptable to them to dismiss their lawsuit, which brings us to today. The standard review for the subject C D P amendment is the currently certified Malibu LCP. The amended policies and provisions that the commission approved with suggested modifications earlier today are not yet certified, so they are not the standard review for this amendment. The certified LCP public access policies and provisions that are specific to signs state that signs that purport to identify the boundary state that signs that purport to identify the boundary between public trust lands and private property shall not be permitted. Further, signs that indicate that public access to public trust lands is restricted cannot be permitted. These provisions are designed to protect legal public access. Signs can impact public access and recreation by containing inaccurate statements, such as purporting to identify a fixed boundary between public trust lands and private property where the boundary is in fact ambulatory. Also failing to acknowledge the existence of a public access easement or deed, or deed restricted area, or including statements about public access restrictions where there are no restrictions. Such inaccurate statements mislead and deter members of the public from using public lands where they have the right of access. Uh, next slide, please. This slide shows the project site from the beach. The applicants proposed to amend the CDP to add a sign on the beach side of the existing residence facing the beach. This sign is proposed to be 18 inches by 24 inches in size with a white background and black letters. The applicants have stated that the signage is proposed to provide information on the location of the areas to which the public has access and the location of areas of private property from which the applicants may exclude the public. The applicants indicate that this is necessary to minimize conflicts between the residents and members of the public using the beach for access and recreation. Commission staff has coordinated extensively with the applicants about both the appropriate interpretation of the Malibu LCP requirements and the specific sign wording that can avoid impacts to public access and recreation. If I can have the next slide, please. Slide four shows the wording that the applicants proposed for the sign. This sign will, would state that public access extends 25 feet landward of the mean high tideline. This includes the public trust lands that are seaward of the mean high tideline and then the entire area inland from there to a line parallel to and 25 feet landward of the mean high tideline on the product, on the private property where the public access deed restriction applies. The sign then states that no public access is allowed on the private property from there to the house. The proposed language of the sign is accurate in the sense that it acknowledges the existence of the right of public access consistent with the location of public trust lands and the public access deed restriction. It does not purport to identify the boundary between public trust lands and private property as a fixed line, nor does it indicate that public access to public trust lands is restricted in any way. As such, it is not prohibited by the existing LCP language. Next slide, please. To ensure, to ensure continued consistency with the LCP, it is necessary to ensure that any future replacement or modification of the sign will continue to meet these standards and avoid adverse impacts to public access. So staff recommends the addition of special condition number three to require that any replacement or change to the sign must be considered by the commission in a further amendment to the subject CDP. Additionally, although the sign is accurate today, the mean high tideline is ambulatory, being located where the plane of mean high water intersects with the land. And that point changes both with changing sea levels and with changes in beach profiles. As such, the location of the mean high tideline can be expected to change over time. And in consideration of sea level rise, it is likely to move further inland. Thus, staff recommends the addition of special condition four to limit the authorization of the sign to a 20-year period. At the end of the 20 years, the applicant may apply for a further amendment to the CDP to retain the sign and include information to demonstrate that the sign is accurate. If no amendment is sought, then the sign must be removed at the end of the term. In conclusion, staff recommends that the commission approve the CDP amendment subject to special conditions three and four. Uh, there is a very short addendum on this item. And that concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Thank you. Uh, now bring it about, do we have any expertise to report? Okay, online, oh. Um, now we'll open the public hearing. So again, we have three minutes per side. We begin with the appellant's, yes, please, Chris.
We don't have any appellants or applicants.
Oh.
Um, signed up to speak. We have an applicant representative from Pacific Legal, Christopher Kaiser, on the line, available for questions.
Got it. All right. Sounds great. So then we bring it back to the commission. Or any comments, questions, discussion? Commissioner Nara?
Well, I'm glad we worked out some here. I guess my only question is, we're, given what we're seeing with sea level rise, 20 years seems like a long time before we revisit this. So does staff have any? How, how did we pick 20? Since it looks like it's already lapping at the doors.
Yes, thank you. Well, 20 is not a magic number. You know, that was, uh, it's a period of time that the commission in the past has applied to other sorts of projects typically dealing with mitigation requirements for sea level rise and a period of time that we've deemed appropriate for reevaluation to occur. Uh, we could have, of course, discussed shorter terms with the applicant. There is a provision, uh, of course, that if conditions change on site, then, well, in this case, the language of the sign always points out that areas landward of the mean high tideline will be available. Uh, 25 feet landward of the mean high tideline will be available for public access. So we do believe that the language of the sign will always be correct, but we do have concerns about long-term trends. You know, if the entire beach were to become permanently inundated. And that's really the, the point of that 20-year condition is that there should be a reopener so that the commission continue, uh, would be allowed to continue to reevaluate this. I would just note that, that period of time, although not, it's not a magic number, but it is the period of time that our staff has discussed as part of this settlement agreement and the settlement that was reached with the applicant. So we would recommend, uh, not changing that number as that would likely result in objections from the applicant. And so with that, I'll just note that we are available for more questions on this.
It does seem like you've worked out good language to address that. So, but thank you for the further explanation for.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Conklin.
I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood. I guess I don't understand what the purpose of the 25 feet landward language is. Why can't we just put a sign that says private from here? And behind it?
The ambulat, uh, through the chair, that it's, the difficulty in describing this line has to do with the ambulatory nature of the mean high tideline, which is always changing. And so unless, uh, someone had the ability to survey that mean high tideline at any given moment, it would always be difficult to identify that line exactly. The 25 feet is a remnant of that special condition of that 1970s coastal development permit that Barbara mentioned. At that time, it was the commission's practice from requiring lateral access rather than to have that lateral access extend all the way from the mean high tideline to the toe of development as we typically would do today. At that time in the 1970s, our standard condition was to require a public access way 20, that would extend 25 feet landward of the mean high tideline. And of course, that does provide some ambiguity. And, and so we've, we've worked within the, the language of that special condition and incorporated that into the signage.
Thank you. I, I don't want to, uh, beat this on, but I just, I, the ambulatory boundary is such a complex issue. Um, moving forward with other applications, could we consider amending the, I'm sorry, was it in the original, uh, lease, the original permit?
It was in the original CDP.
Could we consider in the future amending the permit to, to actually fix the boundary moving forward?
This particular permit?
I'm, I'm talking about in the future, maybe something that we could consider to avoid these complications. It, I mean, it's quite a challenging issue because that could end up either, you know, it, you, you raised the exact point. Just trying to describe the boundary between public and private that is ambulatory is just really difficult. If you fix it, you will run into problems in some shape or form, depending on how you do it. You're either going to take public property or you're, you're going to take private property at some point. So, um, it's a, it is a really important question and something I'm hoping to delve into with State Lands Commission as we're talking about public trust and, and try to figure out a better way. Um, or at least a more clear way to describe that boundary because I think it's going to come up more often. Thank you, appreciate that. It's just a really complex issue with the ambulatory boundary and I'm glad that we're all talking about it.
Commissioner Rice?
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, just to make sure I'm understanding this, I, I understand the ambulatory line issue. What my question or my seeking clarification is around the unique nature of this issue specifically in that the original CDP allowed for the placement of a sign. Normally, our philosophy is we don't like signage generally like this because of the ambiguity of it and any kind of sign that's basically, uh, um, telegraphing stay off is a deterrent for, it, it can be, it can be intimidating. So this is a very unique situation in this, that the CDP gave permission to have signage. And our action on it, if we go along with the staff's recommendation, doesn't have implications for other properties in which there is not such signage currently where we issued CDPs.
Yeah, it's not actually, uh.
Okay, good. Help me out.
It's not actually the case that the, the original CDP here said anything about signage. The original CDP was just for the house itself. And it established the, um, the area extending 25 feet landward from the mean high tideline to which the public would have access. But it didn't say anything about signage. But the issue here was how can these people convey accurately that they do have private property rights on some of the beach and not on other parts of the beach? And we, we determined that.
This is the inverse of what I was hoping. So there are there, and so there was a long legal battle here. There was, there was, and I am concerned about implications. Is my concern warranted?
Yes, I, well, I think just.
Not that we have a choice potentially.
Right. And so I think what happened here is that the applicant originally applied to the city for a sign. The city, um, denied it and, and based on the LCP language said, we don't think signs are appropriate. Um, they were then sued. We were brought into that suit and we lost that lawsuit. So I think, sorry, we settled the lawsuit.
Yeah, we didn't actually, the, the LCP language says, as has been indicated, that signs that purport to identify the boundary between the, uh, state titans and private lands um, are, are prohibited. So there was a disagreement between our staff and the city staff about what exactly that means. Does that mean that you can't say anything about the boundary? Does it mean that you can't identify exactly where that boundary is? Does it mean that you can't purport to indicate that the boundary is immobile when it's actually ambulatory? The city took the position that, that simply no signs could be. We didn't think that that was a reasonable interpretation of the LCP language. Um, and so this was the way we interpreted the LCP to allow the language as long as it was not purporting to identify a fixed boundary because there is no fixed boundary here.
So the, the language is agreeable, the sign in itself to me is distasteful. And I'm sorry that we're having to do this frankly, because it is a sign nonetheless that has a negative connotation versus a permissive connotation.
And, and I don't think we disagree that there are potential adverse impacts of signs like this, but we needed to find a balance between their legitimate right to identify their private property and the need to accurately convey the areas where the public has rights. It does both say something about private and about public property. We were, um, we were, staff was adamant that both needed to be included on the sign. Um, there were discussions at some point about the possibility of a sign that would merely say private property here. And this sign doesn't do that, so we thought it was appropriate.
Through the, through the chair, I'd also like to note that our Chief of Enforcement is online and, and had something she wanted to add.
Ms. Haggy?
Thank you so much for, for noticing that. It's a little tricky to get noticed when you're on Zoom. I just wanted to say to your point, though, about the presidential effect, um, the point that, that Mr. Hudson made earlier is, is relevant to the, the reason this was so complicated is because of the 25 feet buffer that they, that they were provided in the original permit. And so there was a lot of difficulty figuring out where to place the sign. If that weren't the case, that it would have been just, um, it would have been up to the toe of the development. And so I think that we would be very careful about the way in which we apply this in future permits.
Thank you, Ms. Haggy. Sounds great. Any more questions or comments? Okay, great. Um, will someone make a motion in a second?
I'll make, you go.
Commissioner Mall?
I'll make a motion. Let me just find that. Well, I know, I just want to speak to it too. But first, I, I move that the commission approve the proposed amendment to coastal development permit number P 10 176 9559 A1 pursuant to the staff recommendation for a yes vote.
I'm going to second. Aguirre seconds, O'Malley?
Yeah, just very briefly, um, understanding how challenging and difficult this was, I think you all came up with a, um, as best as we can do. So I fully appreciate that. I would only ask that staff keep us informed. If you become aware that the 25-foot setback landslide enters this person's living room, let us know if they have a flat screen TV and if we need folding chairs, because I'd like to check out the view there. Um, with, with that, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Touche, touche. Um, okay, then I guess we'll, we'll, uh, take a roll call vote. Ms. Miller, thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
This land was made for you and me, yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes, and the commission approves the proposed amendments to the CDP.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, staff. And then we'll move on to item number 13, LA County Deputy Director Report. Mr. Hudson, go ahead.
Thank you. So item 13 is the deputy director's report for the South Coast District, which includes four permit waivers and three immaterial amendments. We're not aware of any opposition to the items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. Staff is available for questions.
Great. Um, do three or more commissioners object to, oh, first, public comment.
Uh, there are no speakers for this item.
Okay, great. Do three or more commissioners object to an item on the W Director's report? Then the commission concurs and we, 14A, 14B, we are moved to consent. So now we move on to our enforcement report. Item 15, and we'll consider agenda items 15.1, 15.2, point three, and 15.4 together. And I'll wait for our staff to get rearranged.
All right, now I'm well guarded.
No, we got you.
Government defends me. So this would be it's, you know, it's my first of everything today, but this particular I want to be very careful. So do I read the order numbers or any of that? Or can we just?
Vice Chair Escalante?
Oh, yeah, you gave me the thing. Okay, so.
I'll start out and then throw it to you to announce the matter if I might do that.
Excellent, please, Ms. Haggy.
Great, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Escalante and members of the commission. We would now like to present agenda items 15.1 through 15.4, which share a single combined staff report, and we're ready to have you announce the matter.
Thank you, Ms. Haggy. So this is consent cease and desist order number CCC dash 24 dash CD dash 01. The consent restoration order CCC dash 24 dash RO dash 01. And the consent administrative penalty number CCC dash 24 dash AP dash 01 and CCC dash 24 dash AP 3 dash 01. The orders are all proposed to be issued to legado companies in response to activities on the property located on 6819 Pacific Avenue in Playa del Rey in Los Angeles, California. Would the alleged violator and/or representatives identify themselves for the record, please? On the mic, please.
Thank you. Ted Harris, California Strategies, part of the respondent team.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Staff, can you please identify what items are already part of the record?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. The record consists of the contents of the staff report and the supporting documents, the addendum that we posted last night, which contain letters of support from the LA County Department of Beach and Harbors, California Department of Parks and Recreation, Los Angeles District, Friends of Biona Wetlands, Heel the Bay, Surf Rider Foundation, South Bay Chapter, Dr. Edith Reed, Sierra Club Airport Marina Group, and Sierra Club, California, Coastal Subcommittee, Grassroots Coalition, Biona Institute, and the Coastal Lands Action Network, and some brief responses to some of the suggestions made therein. The the record also includes today the public documents and the violation file and today's hearing.
So how much time do you think you'll take, Ms. Haggy?
We would like 30 minutes, please.
Great, 30 minutes for staff presentation. There should not have been any experte communications, but do any commissioners have anything to report? Any communications to report? Accidental communications, right. I will now review the rules for this proceeding. Staff has asked up to 30 minutes for its presentation, and so I'll give the alleged violator the same amount of time. And they may also request to reserve some of that time for their own rebuttal. After any presentation by the alleged violator, we will allow three minutes for any other party who would like to speak as an interested member of the public, after which the chair may allow the alleged violator to use any reserved rebuttal time to respond to comments from interested persons and may then have staff respond to the testimony and to any new evidence introduced. Anyone who speaks at this hearing may propose questions, either orally or in writing, that they would like commissioners to ask of any other party. But it is not appropriate to suggest that questions be asked to yourself. Commissioners may, but are not required to ask the proposed questions. So now we'll begin the public hearing with the staff presentation.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. We're pleased to announce that the respondent, Legato Companies, has worked with staff to reach an amicable resolution of this case by agreeing to the proposed consent cease and desist order, consent restoration order, and consent administrative penalties actions, which we will collectively refer to today as the consent orders. This matter involves the use of a large construction equipment to break up and flatten approximately 1.5 acres of Southern Ford Dune Habitat, which is now a very rare habitat, and so is also an environmentally sensitive habitat area or ESHA under the Coastal Act. These grading actions also temporarily blocked a public access easement, as will be explained in more detail in the presentation. Enforcement staff has worked closely with respondent and greatly appreciates their cooperation and participation in crafting the proposed resolution. We are very pleased to present this settlement proposal to you today, as it not only includes full restoration of the impacted area, but also requires more than six and a half acres of restoration habitat as mitigation, the installation of public access and interpretive educational signs, and the payment of $600,000 to the violation remediation account. Today's presentation will be given in chief by Erin McClendon, the commission's deputy chief of enforcement, who was also the lead staffer on this matter, given our staffing shortage over the last year. I note that in addition to myself and Erin, Alex Halpern, a deputy general counsel, and Rachel Pausch, senior ecologist, are familiar with the matter and available to answer questions. Erin?
Thank you, Lisa. And if we could bring up the presentation or the PowerPoint? Thank you. Good afternoon, Vice Chair and members of the commission. In this 2003 photo, you can see a portion of the property is owned by respondent, covered by Southern Ford Dune Habitat, which is the first ridge of dunes landward of an active beach. I will refer to this this habitat throughout the presentation as Southern Ford Dunes or simply dunes. Next slide. Respondent's properties are located in Playa del Rey at the midpoint of the Santa Monica Bay, as you can see in this regional map with a red star. For reference, I've highlighted Malibu at the up coast end and the Palos Verdes Peninsula on the down coast end of the San Monica Bay. Next slide. Zooming in closer and outlined here in red, you can see the properties in relation to the community of Playa del Rey. The properties are located just down coast of the Marina del Rey Harbor and immediately adjacent to a very popular public beach known as Toes Beach. A segment of the 22 mile Marvin Brody Bike Trail is located seaward of the properties, which parallels the coastline. And you can see it in that gray line down to the bottom. Next slide. And now to the properties. There are two adjacent privately owned undeveloped sandy beach lots that total about three acres, immediately inland of the public beach. Both of the lots are outlined in red. Prior to the occurrence of the unpermitted development and if and for decades prior, this area was covered by dune habitat. Also shown in this aerial photo is the is a 10 foot wide vertical public access easement that crosses the properties shown in blue here. While the public has historically crossed the properties to reach the public beach, a 1992 boundary line agreement between a former owner of the properties, the City of LA and State Lands Commission formally affirmed the public rights to cross the properties. Next slide. Next, we move to ground level view of the properties in this photo taken in 2003. Coastal dune habitat throughout the state, and especially in Southern California, is extremely rare. And Southern Ford Dune Habitat has been consistently categorized by the commission as ESHA. Beach dune complexes constitute one of the state's rarest landscapes. Where they do occur, coastal dunes are characterized by their sandy substrate, topographical features, and uniquely adapted vegetated communities. Commission staff senior ecologist, Dr. John Engel, has visited the site on more than one occasion prior to the unpermitted activities and has determined that this area is ESHA. This photo, taken on a site visit in 2003, shows the natural undulating dunes supporting native dune plants. This pocket of dunes on the properties is really the last remaining dunes along this particular stretch of Santa Monica Bay. Historically, and prior to the development of this area, dunes dominated this landscape. That is why these small pockets of habitat are so so critical to the variety of increasingly rare flora and fauna that call dunes home. Next slide. Many remaining dune communities continue to support an array of native plants and animals uniquely adapted to this transition zone between land and sea. Dunes not only provide habitat for a number of rare plants and animals, but they also provide a natural buffer between the sea and the built environment, which is critically important in light of sea level rise and increased storm events. Dunes provide a physical barrier against storm waves, reducing the risk of flooding in inland developed areas. Next slide. Unfortunately, on Friday, August 9th, 2019, and through that weekend, respondent used heavy construction equipment, including front loaders and a bulldozer, to break apart the dunes located on the properties and to grade the dunes flat. And in doing so, remove dune habitat. Here is a picture taken from a member of the public in the initial staging of equipment. Next slide. Here's another photo from the initial grading activities and shows the heavy equipment used. It's unclear what respondent's intent was, but it had the effect of removing the dune habitat. Next slide. In this aerial photograph, taken a week after the activity occurred, you can see the that the vegetated dunes are gone. The red polygon in this approximate in this area spanned about one and a half acres. Next slide. This is another photo taken from a member of the public, and while it is a bit pixelated due to the camera used, you you can see that the entire top of the dune was graded flat. And you can see the shovel marks from the bulldozer that went back and forth over the dunes, which also removed all of the vegetation in this area. Next slide. The activities continued to to occur over the weekend of August 10th through 11th. Here you see the dudes before the activity and in the general area, and then the dunes or the the area afterwards. During the grading activity, the vertical public access path was also blocked and unusable. Enforcement staff immediately spring sprang into action, investigated the case, and researched permit history on the properties. And because of the significant impacts occurring to coastal resources and to halt the ongoing damages and to provide an interim remedial action, on August 13th, 2019, the executive director sent a notice prior to intent prior to the intent to issue an executive director cease and desist order or an EDCDO. Next slide. Because we rarely have have to use this tool provided in the Coastal Act, I want to give the commission a bit more background here. The authority for the executive director to issue an EDCDO is provided by Section 30809 of the Coastal Act, quoted in part on this slide. The executive director may issue an EDCDO when they determine that an activity is occurring without a CDP or inconsistent with a previously issued CDP. Important to note is that an EDCDO generally expires 90 days after it is issued. It's therefore intended as a temporary order to address immediate situations in an interim period before we can bring a regular cease and desist order or restoration order before you. Next slide. An EDCDO was issued on August 13th, 2019, and required respondent to immediately stop all work and submit a plan to provide some temporary measures to reduce continuing impacts and to start the process of full restoration of the dunes. Pursuant to the EDCDO, respondent installed wind fencing to begin the process of restoring dune morphology and a post and rope fence with signs to alert the the public for ongoing restoration. We call these symbolic fences as they are more to educate the public about the ongoing restoration without creating visual impacts in the area. Again, these are temporary measures that were implemented pending a long term resolution of violations, which are the items before you and for your consideration today. Next slide. Soon after the EDCDO was issued, respondent met with enforcement staff on a number of occasions to address compliance with the requirements of the EDCDO. It was during this time that respondent made it clear to staff they wanted to work with us to resolve all the issues through an amicable amicable resolution. Through this process, respondent gained a greater appreciation for the significance of dune habitat. And they now really understand how critically important these dunes are. The next few slides show the initial compliance with the EDCDO and some of the successes of that work. Here you can see the symbolic fencing fencing that surrounds the entire property, with the exception of the vertical public access easement that remained open for public use. Next slide. The EDCDO required the installation of strategically placed wind fencing to begin the establishment of dune habitat. The wind fencing that was installed slowly began the restorative process, and dunes eventually formed across the properties. In this photo, taken about two months after the installation, you can see the very beginnings of dune formation. You can also see the success of the symbolic fencing, as you can see no footprints across the property. Next slide. As confirmed by our senior staff ecologist, native dune plants also have slowly returned to the properties, likely from the natural seed bank that remained on the properties from the preexisting dunes and potentially from seeds reaching the properties from wind or wildlife. Next slide. Luckily, the EDCDO was hugely successful here, and the areas impacted have largely recovered. But a long term resolution is still needed to address full restoration of the properties, mitigation for the temporal losses of habitat caused by the unpermitted development, and resolution of coastal act liabilities. This photo was taken a couple of days ago and shows how well the properties have recovered. Next slide. So now I'll turn to the proposed actions before you today, which, if approved, will provide full resolution of this matter. First, the first to the consent cease and desist order and restoration order. This slide shows the statutory authority for issuance of the consent the consent orders. As described more more fully at pages 13 through 18 of the staff report, the jurisdictional elements of the commission to issue these orders have been met. The respondent undertook development as that as that term is defined in the Coastal Act, and no CDP was obtained. The unpermitted development is clearly inconsistent with the Coastal Act, including the public access and ESHA protection policies. And if left unaddressed, will cause continuing resource damage. Next slide. Next, I'm going to address the administrative penalty penalty actions. You likely notice that these consent orders include the imposition of two sets of administrative penalties, one pursuant to Coastal Act Section 30821 and one to Section 30821.3. Section 30821 gives the commission the authority to impose penalties when someone is in violation of the public access provisions. When someone, excuse me, in Section 30821.3, which just became effective on January 1st, 2022, gives the commission the the authority to impose administrative penalties when someone is in violation of any provision of the Coastal Act other than the public access provisions. In this particular enforcement matter, the violations include impacts to both public access and natural resources. And the Coastal Act has separate provisions for each of these categories. Here, the unpermitted development temporarily blocked public access across the easement, albeit for only a short period of time when the activities occurred. Also, as described earlier and in more detail in the staff report, the activities leveled and destroyed approximately one and a half acres of dunes. So both sections are relevant here. Therefore, the commission may impose administrative civil penalties for the public access violations and the natural resource violations. Next slide. In Section 30821 and Section 30821.3, both incorporate the five factors from Section 30820 as the basis for determining the amount of civil liability, which is covered in more detail at section at, excuse me, at pages 18 through 25 of the staff report. Respondent and staff came to terms on the general framework of these consent orders in late 2022 and early 2023. But due in part to the lack of staff, we were we weren't able to bring these consent orders to you sooner. The good thing here is that the EDCDO in 2019 immediately stopped any additional grading and required that interim rest restorative measures be installed. So aggregating these factors, commission staff concluded that a moderate penalty is justified here. Staff recommends that the commission adopt staff's recommendation for imposition of monetary penalties, as I will as I will describe in the next few slides. Next slide. And now moving to the proposed resolution, which includes three key provisions. The first requires respondent to submit and implement a restoration plan to fully restore the dune habitat that was impacted on the properties. Second, the proposed consent orders require respondent to submit a mitigation plan to provide mitigation for the temporal losses to habitat caused by the unpermitted development. The mitigation will occur on an approximately 6.2 acre portion of Doc Marler State Beach, which I will explain in a couple of slides. And finally, the proposed consent orders would would resolve coastal act liabilities by requiring a payment of $600,000 to the violation remediation account, which is an account held by the State Coastal Conservancy to fund and support other beneficial projects, such as restoration, public access, and recreation. And in lieu of payment of the remainder of the penalty, the consent orders require additional restoration on, on the properties, and excuse me, on portions of the properties not directly related to this violation, currently covered with predominantly non-native invasive ice plant, and require respondent to, to design and install interpretive signs and public access signs. Collectively, the total value of the property, the proposed penalty is just shy of one million dollars. Next slide. The first component of the consent orders is the onsite restoration. As you can see in this two thousand twenty-three aerial image, the implementation of the interim plan required by the E D C D O has been very successful in allowing for natural resources, excuse me, natural restoration of the impacted area. Here you can see the undulating topography of dune habitat. That said, there are additional measures needed to fully restore the area, including removal of invasive non-native plants, planting where necessary and appropriate native plants, and monitoring the properties to ensure the restoration meets a final success criteria, which will be established in the approved restoration plans. Respondent has stated that their intention is to engage with the community and conduct outreach to inform the community of the restoration and mitigation efforts prior to implementing the plans required by these consent orders. Next slide. And now a very exciting part of these consent orders is respondent's agreement to restore an approximately six point two acre area of Dockweiler State Beach with dune habitat. That area is outlined here in red and is located around the Gilla Street Public Restrooms, seen in the center of the slide, which is about a half mile from the properties. The goals of the mitigation work are to create vegetative dune habitat in areas currently graded flat by municipal beach grooming, mechanical raking. The area now has almost zero habitat value, as it has been groomed on a very regular basis. The goals include eliminating non-native invasive plants, increasing cover of native dune plants, accumulating sand over time to build dune topography, and providing an adaptation strategy to sea level rise via increased dunes, and maintaining enhancing beach and coastal access for the public. Both the restoration described earlier and this mitigation will not only allow for rare native plants to grow, but will also provide essential habitat for the animals that utilize dunes, such as the California Legless Lizard, the Globus Dune Beetle, and the Western Snowy Plover, just to name a few. And we and respondent will be monitoring for the presence and return of these unique animals. Next slide. Actually, can you go back one, please? Thanks. Um, as you will see in the, the next couple of slides, which I gave you a sneak peek of, creating a nature-based adaptation strategy to sea level rise couldn't be more important here. And before I move to the next slide, pay close attention to the location of the bike path uh, as it dips towards the ocean and the toe of the slope leading up to the restrooms just inland of that bike path. And now to the next slide. This photo, taken on January fourth of this year, highlights the impacts the recent extreme storm events and sea level rise have had on our coast and the impactful role dunes could play here. This is that same bike path in the previous image that used to be located well inland of the ocean. Here you can see the bike path undermined and section collapsed into at times the ocean. Earlier on this day during high tide, water was seen rushing over and around the bike path and towards the restroom facility. This very popular trail is closed and could likely be lost forever as sea levels continue to rise. However, in coordination with state parks and L A County beaches and harbors, and as required by the consent orders, respondent will be creating a six point two acre area of dune habitat that will capture sand and provide a natural buff, excuse me, a natural barrier in front of and around the restroom facility. Next slide. Here are two more photos taken that same day. In the photo on the left, the bike path is actually buried under the wet sand. And then you see where it's collapsed. And the photo on the right shows a close-up of one of the collapsed sections. And the county is currently working with commission planning staff on a project that would, would relocate this segment of bike path further inland and behind the restroom facility. These consent, consent orders take into account this planned retreat, factoring in potential relocation areas. And this will be coming to you as a separate permit application from the county and is unrelated to these enforcement proceedings. Next slide. In lieu of payment of a portion of the penalty, these consent orders require the restoration of portions of the property not involved in the violations, including a segment of the back dune area currently covered with predominantly ice plant, as shown in red. The goal of this in lieu project is to further enhance existing dunes on the properties to a more natural dune habitat. Next slide. Here's a close-up of that ice plant looking north with the dunes and the public beach to, to the left. You can see how the ice plant has completely taken over, uh, the back dune area here. Next slide. And here is one more look at the ice plant, but looking south. Removing ice plant, including its removal by hand, which will occur here, is very time, time consuming and complex. The approximate value of this in lieu project is estimated to be three hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. Additionally, as part of the penalty resolution, these consent orders require the design and installation of at least three interpretive signs and several public access signs at both the properties and the mitigation site. The interpretive signs will include the following themes: sand dunes and the, and the unique habitat they provide, such as the dunes in this photo here, which was, uh, taken of the properties in two thousand and ten. Sea level rise, the impacts that such events will cause, sandy beach ecosystems and shorebirds, such as the Western Snowy Plover, which is seen on the upper left, uh, corner of the slide and the California lease turn. And the measures the public and beach managers can take to protect these birds, such as limiting off-leased dogs and mechanized raking of the beach. Signs will be in both English and Spanish and will acknowledge the commission's role in the installation of these signs. Next slide. So we are very excited that respondent has agreed to the proposed resolution of this matter. It will include not only the full restoration of the site, but also significant mitigation and habitat enhancement. And just in closing, uh, I want to thank respondent again for working so cooperatively, uh, with us to provide this agreement to the public, as well as to Ted Harris and Josh Kaplan, who made sure that this great outcome was reached as soon as possible. And then finally, to the staff of L A County Beaches and Harbors and State Parks and to the public, and particularly those in the Playa del Rey community, uh, who were instrumental here in getting to this resolution. Who recommend that the commission approve the proposed consent cease, excuse me, consent cease and desist order, consent restoration order and consent administrative penalties set forth in the staff report. Uh, there are four motions for this matter and they can be found on pages seven and eight of the staff report. And that concludes, uh, the staff presentation and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McLunden. I guess we'll have six minutes to answer anything, anything from the, uh, the alleged violator, please come up and, or their representative and address the commission again, please give us your name.
Ted Harris with California Strategies, part of the respondent team. And thank you, vice chair, and thank you, members of the commission. Um, I just want to first think.
Let me just get the, your clock started, thirty minutes. Billy, sorry.
Great. Thank you again, and I want to thank both commission staff, um, as well as L A County, um, state parks, many other entities, um, as well as the Los Ritos, Wetlands, Stewart's, uh, for creation of interim plan, and so many others for getting us to where we are. It was a terrible incident and we're very thankful for the community cooperation, as well as all the input from the community in order to turn a terrible incident into an opportunity for a model for coastal resiliency, as well as an opportunity to expand habitat both onsite as well as at Dockweiler. And, you know, over the last four years, the interim measures have been very successful to get it much of the way there. But with the additional ice plant removal, um, and putting in native plants there, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments on the support letters that came in, that the plan will be developed in concert with the commission's ecologist to ensure not just the flora, but the fauna will be supported, uh, both onsite at, at Toes Beach as well as at Dockweiler. Again, I'm just hearing strong support for the order and we're very glad that we can turn this into an opportunity for a model that can lead to, um, less grooming, hopefully throughout the state, a model for additional dunes, um, and really chance throughout Santa Monica Bay and throughout the state for nature-based solutions for climate change, um, that can increase the ability for there to be habitat and the visitor experience. I should also mention that the signage will be really important to educate and inspire folks over the importance of dunes and for nature-based solutions. Um, so with that, um, we're here for any questions, as well as Josh Kaplan. Um, and, and glad to elaborate, I would like to reserve some time just to respond and follow up as needed, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Yes, you'll have plenty of time to rebut it if necessary. Um, we do appreciate the brevity though. And, um, I guess we'll now take any public comment on this issue and, um, this would be testimony of anyone who submitted a speaker slip.
Okay, uh, we have eight people on Zoom signed up to speak. Uh, we'll start with Marsha Hanscom, followed by Catherine Pease and then Suzanne Cumming.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can hear you. Uh, give us a second to reset the clock and we'll get it going. Just give us a moment, we need to pull it back up.
Sure.
Is it, uh, two minutes a piece or three?
I think I said three minutes.
Okay, three. And then go ahead.
Great, thank you. Marsha Hanscom with the Coastal Lands Action Network. And I just want to say, honorable commissioners and staff, um, how grateful we are for these enforcement actions. It took a while, of course, because of limited staff and because of COVID and all the things that happened in between. But, um, just so you know, our community where, you know, I moved to Playa del Rey in two thousand and four, and we've worked to defeat at least two previous landowners from developing this for dune with, uh, luxury condos and beach houses. And, uh, so hundreds of our neighbors and other beach lovers of Playa del Rey were really horrified when this bulldozing excavation happened. So we're very grateful. Sometimes it just takes time for people to come around and it looks like that's what's happened here. So as we said in our letter, we're very grateful for the work you've done. We also are especially grateful that staff listened to local experts and that they allowed Mother Nature to rebuild the sand dunes, not using heavy machinery, which was contemplated at first. You know, let's bring in the machines to undo the damage that the machines just did, which doesn't always work and in fact often causes more problems. So the wind fences, combined with the fact that we've kept out the, the quote grooming machines of the county, which we'd love to get stopped in other places as well. Um, and then the sand dune seeds took hold as they do naturally and the sand, um, the sand created and the wind created the, the dunes. So, um, of course, not all of the plants that were present previously have returned. And as you can see in the letter, we co-wrote with Biona Institute, the biologist there, Roy Van De Hook, has suggested specific plants that, uh, were there previously and could be part of the healing. So I just want to underscore that, um, those are important. And I really appreciated that Mr. Harris talked about the flora, not just the flora, but the fauna as well, because there were rare, rare sand dune beetles there. There were rare lizards there before and we want to make sure that the monitoring includes that. And I know that's going to all be included in the work with your biologist. So, uh, again, just thank you for all the work you've done here. This is one of the best enforcement, um, solutions that I've seen. And so, uh, maybe because I just know this place so well and love it so well, uh, thank you to Erin and, and Lisa and your entire staff.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Pease.
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Chair Escalante and Coastal Commissioners. My name is Dr. Catherine Pease and I'm the Director of Science and Policy at Heal the Bay. I'm speaking today on behalf of Friends of Biona Wetlands as well. We support the orders and penalties before you today concerning the destruction of sand dune habitat at Toes Beach in Playa del Rey. As you heard in two thousand nineteen, our organizations, along with community members, elected officials and partners, were alarmed to see and learn of the destruction of the dunes by the landowner. And as you heard, dunes are incredibly rare and serve as habitat for endangered species, as well as a natural buffer against sea level rise. We appreciated the swift action by the Coastal Commission staff and we appreciate that shortly after those initial violations, the landowner, Legato Companies, has been cooperative with commission staff in coming to a consensual resolution. We support the requirements that additional mitigation will be performed both onsite and nearby Dockweiler Beach and that the penalty of six hundred thousand dollars will support local beneficial projects located as close as possible to where the impacts occurred and in support of dune restoration and access projects. We also support the required educational signage on dune habitat, sea level rise, resilience and access. We ask for your approval today. And as the Legato Companies work on the next steps to develop the restoration and mitigation plans, we recommend that the plans maximize opportunities for endangered and protected species, as well as climate resilience and sea level rise adaptation, that the plans be prepared by and in consultation with local experts in dune restoration and in coordination with other projects happening locally. And we request that the Legato Companies update the community and interested parties on plans and progress to ensure transparency and rebuild trust, such as through emails, as well as presentations and, um, at, at neighborhood council meetings. We thank you for the hard work by staff and your time and the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Suzanne Cumming, followed by Robert Roy Van De Hook and then Mary Simone. Uh, Suzanne Cumming.
Good afternoon.
Just one second, we're gonna sit. Okay, go ahead. Your clock is reset. Go ahead.
Thanks. Good afternoon. I'm Suzanne Cumming. I'm a lawyer, a member of Sierra Club and defend Biona Wetlands. I want to thank the commissions and commissioners and staff for their very hard work on this enforcement action. And I want to highlight Sierra Club's letter of support. Thank you so much for reading all those letters, uh, and, and and including monitoring for the fauna. There were rare beagles and lizards here before and we hope they'll be here again. And I, uh, also want to, uh, thank you for the other speakers here in support of this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, uh, Robert Roy Van De Hook, followed by Mary Simone, Craig Cadwallader, and then Patricia McPherson and Nancy Okada. Robert Roy Van De Hook.
Uh, this is Roy, uh, Rob Van Van De Hook. I apologize, uh, pause there for a moment. Can you hear me?
Uh, you were very choppy at the beginning, but, uh, please keep going. Uh, please continue.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I'm an environmental scientist and I've, uh, been studying this, uh, dune on and off since, um, nineteen ninety-eight. And, uh, I did find the California Legless Lizard there in the ice plant. I'd like to add into my letter, uh, that I, that Marsha Hanscom and I submitted. I am with the Biona Institute and a part of the collaboration is to defend Biona Wetlands. And the back dune that Erin referred to is, uh, a swale as well. And it's ten feet lower than the front of the dune. So it's on the lee side, of course. It is at the transition of shifting from a southern for dune habitat to a more stabilized dune habitat in part because of the ice plant present there. And that is why. And that is why the California legless lizard, which up and down our coast, is associated with it. Not even those native. So there needs to be care taken as the ice plant is removed. In essence, try establishing the native vegetation like dune lupin, which is another historically favored plant that's native, that the legless lizard finds as suitable habitat because of the insects that are in the root systems of ice plant, native insects, as well as in the dune lupin. So one example would be to plant a transition of dune lupin while the ice plant remains, just making enough space if needed for the dune lupin to grow. And then slowly with time, as the dune lupin establishes more and more individuals, then the ice plant be removed more completely so that the habitat that's in the soil, there's a, there's a very valuable, you know, soil underneath the ice plant vegetation. I'd also like to suggest, and this may be a bit costly and it's in my letter, and that is beach spectacle pod, Dithrea meridima is the type locality is Santa Monica Bay. It's now only known on San Nicholas Island and up in Sebiscow County at the Pismo Dunes region. And that we reestablish, recover through the Endangered Species Act to bring that rare perennial, it's in the mustard family, herbaceous on the surface, but with a perennial root system, so it's long-lived. See, I only have 10 seconds left, but the project is, is good. I'm, I'd like to say more about the seven acre area too, and maybe I can put that in a second letter and get there. And thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mary Sumon. Mary, if you would please let us know if Craig Codwallader is there with you. We're unable to find him, but we see you're from the same organization. And then following that will be Patricia McPherson and then Nancy Okada. Mary Sumon.
Hi, Craig is not with us today. He had another meeting, so you get me.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Good afternoon, Buenos Aires Vice Chair Escalante and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to share today. My name is Mary Simon. I'm a biologist and educator, speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation South Bay Chapter, representing hundreds of volunteers, members, and supporters who cherish our coastal and public access to it. Our chapter has worked for decades to protect the South Bay coastline. We host beach cleanups, conduct water quality tests, certify ocean-friendly restaurants and gardens, and fight plastic pollution. Surf Rider Foundation strongly supports the enforcement orders before you and the mitigation package. It will be essential to have toes fully restored and another six acre nature-based project at Dockweiler. We are happy to hear that Legato Companies have worked cooperatively, cooperatively with the Coastal Commission staff to resolve this egregious destruction of public resources and important habitat. The violation occurred four years ago, and even though legislation, Legato did install fences to help rebuild the dunes in this location, the violation has gone largely unmitigated for that time, with the coast endemic terrestrial species, including endangered species, marine life and beach visitors paying the cost during that time. Resolution is long overdue, and we are grateful to Coastal Commission staff for finding a robust and consensual resolution. We support the restoration and administrative penalty fees, which together total approximately $1 million. We have one request, that $600,000 remediation fee, the earmark specifically for dune creation or a nature-based project in the region, rather than access improvements. Given rising seas and increasing coastal erosion, beach and dune creation is absolutely vital for maintaining our beaches into the future. It would be great to have an opportunity for public input into how these funds are spent. Often penalty fees go towards trails, benches, and access amenities near the coast. And while we support those efforts, we do think that it's important that the mitigation fits the crime. We are excited to see this moving forward and urge you to approve the restoration orders. Thank you so much for your time and attention to this very important issue.
Thank you. Next is Patricia McPherson, followed by Nancy Okada. Patricia, we haven't been able to promote you as, in as a panelist, so I'm allowing you to speak as an attendee. When you're able to, please unmute yourself. Patricia McPherson, I think, just got bumped from the meeting, so we'll move on to Nancy Okada. Nancy is joining via phone. I have allowed you to speak.
Okay, you should hear me now.
I guess we can hear you.
Oh, yes, great. Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Nancy Okada, Chair of the Coastal Subcommittee, Sierra Club, California. And I want to really thank staff for all their work on putting together this enforcement action. This was a long time coming, and they worked really hard. And it's really, really appreciated to restore this area and then also to restore the Dockweiler Beach area as well. And thank you to the violator for actually his contribution in a, in a very strange way. But I'd also like to say that I really appreciate the Coastal Commission looking at this idea of moving the bike path to the other side of the restroom facility. And as sea level rise continues upward towards, you know, mainland, we really need to look at more of those kind of opportunities and get them done before the storms make them evident. So thank you once again, and thanks to the staff and please Commissioners approve this action. Thank you.
Thank you. And Patricia McPherson hasn't returned to the meeting, so I think we'll just go, end it there.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll now close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. For deliberation, are there any questions for staff or the alleged violator? From Commissioners? Was that Commissioner Girra?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is the mitigation plan or monitoring plan include this legless lizard at all that was mentioned?
So the, the, both the mitigation and the restoration will restore the very habitat that the legless lizard uses. But through the restoration, there's a period of sort of walk in the site to determine the existence of any of these species. And of course, they would, the, the plan would incorporate those measures to be taken to avoid any impacts to those particular species.
That's great to hear. Thank you very much. Can I get a little bit out of order? Does staff have any responses to the public comments?
I think Lisa's gonna start it off, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say a few things, Vice Chair. First of all, I should note that I misspoke. Our technical ecologist online today is Dr. Lauren Garcia Garcia, and not the person I announced earlier. And I just wanted to say that we greatly appreciate the role of the public. This was one of those cases where violations often somehow happen mysteriously, starting on Fridays and going over the weekend. And it's difficult for us to get wind of it, and it's very, very helpful that the public here as elsewhere report violations to us so we can take action. And you can see from the resolution here that we try and take a variety of measures into account. And we really try to be creative and turn lemons into lemonade. And here we think we, we hit that. And it's really important when we have a willing partner to work with us. And here we were able to really do something creative to, to craft a resolution. And I just wanted to respond very quickly to the comments of Mary Simone about the use of the money. We have, the violation remediation account is administered by the State Coastal Conservancy. And we have an MOU with them, a memorandum of understanding. And we meet monthly to talk with them about the money that's coming in and the projects that could be funded. And the MOU provides for exactly what she was suggesting, which is that they, it should be used to fund projects of the type and the location of where the violation took place. Because the whole idea, as you can tell from the name of it, violation remediation accounts, we're trying to make the public and the coast whole after violation. And so we look for projects that are as near, as nearby as possible. Sometimes we have to wait and aggregate funds so that we have enough to pay for a project that's pending. And in this case, we aggregated the penalties between access and non-access. But the vast majority of the violation and the days of violation and the penalties were for the non-access violation, violation. So if, if we would be using the vast majority of the 600,000 for habitat restoration. And that concludes my, my, my comments, and I would just hand it to Erin if you want to respond to any of the other comments raised.
Yeah, just very generally, the, the response, excuse me, the response that we had in the addendum, excuse me, covers most of it. The, the one thing that, the one thing that did come up quite a bit was, was some of the speakers in the letters that we received requesting specific plants to be included in the plant palette. So the plant palette will, through the, through the orders, respondents required to find a reference site and use the scientific literature, and from that, create the plant palette. And in talking with, with respondents representatives, many of those plans that they were suggesting are part of their plan already. So I think, I think everyone's on the same page here on the plants that are being used. And I think the, and so we're going to be taking all of those comments into, into account as we go through the next phase, which is reviewing the restoration plan that will be coming to us in a couple months. That concludes my comments, and I didn't know if Alex or Lauren had any others.
No, no more from staff. And then sorry to the alleged violator, did you have any closing remarks since you had some leftover time?
Yes, thank you. One, on the request for updates, we're glad to updates, to provide updates to you both, meetings as well as email updates and others. So absolutely, we'll continue to work with the community. And Josh Kaplan is here. He lives adjacent to the site. We'll remain hopefully right there and be part of the community and able to help inform and educate both the neighborhood councils, as well as email updates and just talking every day. And second, just wanted to reiterate on the transition for the fauna. All care will be taken to make sure that as it transitions from ice plant to native species, that things will remain in place temporarily, and they'll work with the local topography and local plants to make sure that there's, you know, any kind of coverage to protect both dune beetles as well as legless lizards. So we're here in strong support and glad to answer any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Right, lawyers, I'm good now to go back to the dice. Okay, Commissioners, any, anybody has any comments? Commissioner Nara?
I'm ready to make motions if people are ready. I'd like to move that.
That would be page seven.
Yes, I, or is that appropriate? I'm ready to move. I move that the commission issue consent cease and desist order number CCC dash 24 dash CD dash 01 to Legato Companies pursuant to the staff recommendation.
A second.
Do you have any comments or, if I can have any comments? Okay, I would just like to say this is a really great outcome, and I think it's wonderful that the community is working together like this. So really, really appreciated. Very exciting. Commissioner Cummings, did you have?
No.
Ah, see, you heard it from the biologist too, so. Thank you, Commissioner, for agreeing. All right, great. So then let's take a roll call vote. Ms. Miller?
Commissioner Cummings. Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Great, so the commission approved the consent cease and desist order. And we move on to motion number two, the consent restoration order.
All right, I move that the commission issue consent restoration order number CCC dash 24 dash R O dash 01 to Legato Companies pursuant to the staff recommendation and request a yes vote.
Second.
Any comments to that? No? All right, I guess we'll move on to, to, to the roll call vote.
Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga? Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Great, we approve the consent restoration order and go be well. Let's restore some dunes. And thank you so much for all the collaboration.
We have two more.
Oh, sorry. Darn.
In continuing with the lemonade making.
You heard my spiel now. I won't say it again.
I move that the commission issue consent administrative penalty number CCC dash 24 dash AP dash 01 pursuant to section 30821 of the Coastal Act to Legato Companies pursuant to the staff recommendation. And I urge a yes vote.
Second.
All right, I assume no, no comments about that. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga? Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Great, so that was the, approve the consent administrative civil penalty action, and now the last one, fourth motion.
So to finish off, I move that the commission issue consent administrative penalty number CCC dash 24 dash AP three dash 01 pursuant to section 30821.3 of the Coastal Act to Legato Companies pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I urge a yes vote.
Second.
All right, Ms. Miller?
Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
For all the legless lizards, I say yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes.
Vice Chair. Yes, and then we approve the issue consent administrative civil penalty action, and we are done with this item.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, Ms. Haggy. Our enforcement team is the best team. And now I guess we're done? Oh, my gosh. No, wait, closed session. Well, I, yes, okay, we.
We do need to approve some minutes.
Okay, we'll do that. The only thing. So, so two things. Closed session, we'll bump it tomorrow, so the, the chair will be here. So we'll do that tomorrow, most likely at lunch, I figure. And then we'll go over our statewide items. But Ms. Warren, should we trail the Coastal Conservancy? Because isn't that Chair Hart who reports on that? Okay, perfect. Then, yeah, let's move on to the state, statewide items. So we first have an approval of minutes. And I just.
There are actually two sets of minutes, September 2022 and November 2022, so we'll need two separate votes.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the September 2020.
Two?
Okay, September 2022.
I'll move approval of the minutes, September 22.
I'll second.
Great, and roll call vote?
Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Akiri?
Yes.
Akiri, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous.
I think I that was I I should not have voted on that because I was not there in September twenty-three. Okay.
All right, and now we'll Ms. Warren? Now we'll move on to November twenty twenty-two, Ms. Warren?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll vote on the November twenty twenty-two agenda?
I'll move the November twenty twenty-two.
Rice moves? Uranga, seconds. Can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Akiri?
Yes.
Akiri, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner? Vice Chair Escalante? Escalante, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. So we're done with the approval of the minutes. And moving on to Commissioner reports, anybody has anything to report? No? All right, other than we're gonna plan our our trip to Columbia in October. Well, where are we going? Golly. Commission Subcommittee Report? Housing Subcommittee Legislative Subcommittee? Okay, great. Commissioner Nara?
No, I just said we had already had a legislative report, which was very thorough, thanks to staff.
And we'll bump the Conservancy report, Coastal Conservancy reported in March, because this is our Chair Hart's report of Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. The Commissioner Bocchko is out. Santa Monica Bay Restoration Report?
Nothing to report.
Oh, great. And Deputy Attorney General's report?
Yes, thank you. I have one one matter to report, and that is in the Sheer Development Company. So on February twenty-first, after oral argument, the Second District Court of Appeal affirmed the trial court's denial of petitioner's petition for a man writ of administrative mandate. In that case, the petitioner challenged the Coastal Commission's exercise of its appeal jurisdiction to review the San Luis Obispo County's grant of a coastal development permit to build three houses in Los Osos in San Luis Obispo County and its subsequent denial of the permit de novo. The trial court held that substantial evidence did support the Commission's determination that petitioner's properties are located in a sensitive coastal resource area according to the county's local coastal program maps and that the permit is therefore appealable to the Commission. The trial court next held that substantial evidence supported the Commission's determination that the properties lack access to water and wastewater services, which justified denial of the permit since the local county's local coastal program prohibits issuing permits when such services are available, and the Court of Appeal affirmed that decision too. That case was handled by yours truly. I should note, though, that the that the case was handled at the trial court level by Deputy Attorney General Hallie Koutak. And that's the end of my report.
Well, thank you so so much, Attorney General Rish. Rish? Deputy Rish. Ms. Warren, were you gonna say something? Oh, perfect. So I believe this brings us to the end. Wrapping up, we'll be back here tomorrow. Chair Hart will be back in her in her seat. Thank you all for your patience. I know I got a little bumpy at the end. Now I can go have my martini. A little early, I know, but I I earned it. So see you tomorrow, everyone.